I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening. Today is February 22, 2023. Welcome to the Town of Woodfin Board of Adjustment Special Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call to order the resumption of the administrative appeal of Jessica and Alex Bernstein and the Citizens for Responsible Land Use from the determination of Shannon and Tuck, interim planning director contained in the letter dated September 30, 2022, concerning the Robin Hood Road Development Application. I'd like to take role to certify the board for tonight. Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Ms. Osnol?
Here.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Daroni?
Here.
And myself, Michael Bennett, here. This meeting will recess tonight if need be by 9:00 PM or as close as possible. We also take a 20-minute break at a good point around 7:00 PM when it's everybody's agreed upon. And as requested, a subpoena was issued and served for the witness, Mr. Terrell. It's my understanding that the appellant's have withdrawn their request to question this witness, so I have withdrawn the subpoena and the witness is now dismissed. Mr. Noor, is this correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We did not want to engage in cross-conference investigation.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to give it to our attorney to do a quick little...
Ethical considerations, again, as we have in the past, not nearly as in-depth as the last time. Just want to make sure that no one has had any ex parte communications, and if they have, to disclose those and make a determination as to whether anyone has a fixed opinion about this case, not subject to change. I do know that there was a newspaper article that came out, so I will ask if any members of the board read that article, and if they had, did it change your opinion or did it sway you in any way, one way or the other?
I have read it, but it did not make a difference.
I saw it. It didn't make a difference to you?
All right.
No, it didn't make a difference?
No, I didn't see it.
Okay, all right. Any questions from any members or any parties?
Okay. Mr. Portnoy, I believe you are up. Please.
At this time, we'd like to call our next witness, Jason. Jason Corden.
I'm sorry, the last name is?
Corden, C-O-R-D-O-N.
Okay. If you could please take a seat up here.
I think he's been sworn, but I think I'll swear him again. I guess I swore you the last time. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Mr. Corden, could you please introduce yourself to the board?
Yes, my name's Jason Corden. I'm a principal at Hatteras Sky.
And what is Hatteras Sky?
Hatteras Sky is a real estate development and investment company.
And can you tell the board a little bit about your professional background?
Yes, so I went to undergrad in North Carolina at Campbell University, did accounting, and then I went to law school at Chapel Hill. And after that, I practiced real estate tax law for approximately 15 years. Co-terminously with that, I started real estate development around the mid-2000s, culminating in working with Hatteras Sky.
So is it fair to say you've been in the real estate business for at least 15 years?
Yes.
And what is Hatteras Sky's connection to HS Robin Hood Owner LLC?
So Hatteras Sky has several subsidiaries, and one of the wholly-owned subsidiaries, and one of those subsidiaries owns the membership interest in HS Robin Hood, all of them. So it's kind of the indirect sole owner of the property.
And what has your role been with respect to the property at issue in this case?
So I really work on strategy, kind of entitlements, project feasibility, working with consultants to kind of get this project to a point where we can start financing it.
Were you involved in the process of acquiring the property at issue in this case?
Yes.
When did HS Robin Hood Owner acquire the property at issue in this case?
I believe it was in late November of 2019.
What factors played a role in the decision to acquire the property?
Proximity to downtown, the favorable zoning for the property, kind of the impact it has on the skyline from downtown and kind of how prominent it is. It's around, when we acquired the property, totally, it's around 115 acres. So when we were kind of looking at all of that, it had good development characteristics and good conservation characteristics.
And you mentioned favorable zoning. What do you mean by that?
For us, when we looked at the mountain village zoning, which it is, and what the permissible uses are and density and types of uses, it was something that was, you know, we're familiar with developing. It kind of fits our criteria.
Are you referring to the fact that it's zoned mountain village?
Yes.
Okay. Would HS Robin Hood have acquired the property if it wasn't zoned mountain village?
I mean, it would depend on the exact zoning, but I don't believe that, you know, the mountain village zoning designation was what attracted us to the property. So if it wasn't that, I don't, it would depend on what it was, but probably not.
And from a development perspective, what was the goal with respect to what would be built on the property?
We wanted to do some sort of multifamily development, condominiums, primarily condominiums, I would, I think, from the start.
You also mentioned a conservation aspect. Can you explain what you meant by that?
Yeah, so the property being developed is 16 acres, but Hatteras Sky, through various affiliates, controls all 115 acres. And so kind of looking at a purpose we have is conservation and preservation of historic buildings. So when we look for projects, we're looking for projects that can combine those two aspects and kind of marry those together as best we can.
When you were working with the design team to create an initial plan, what was Hatteras Sky's goal with respect to the entitlement review process?
So when we were engaged legal counsel to understand kind of how the entitlement process would work, we wanted to stay within our by rights on development, meaning that we wanted to stay within permitted uses without requests for variances so that we would have certainty throughout the process of what we could do with the property.
And you hit on it a little bit, but can you kind of explain a little more what you mean by certainty and the reasoning for staying within a by right development process?
So when you're outside of a by right development process, every jurisdiction's a little different, but it's, you know, there's a public hearing process, there's subjectivity analysis that can be performed.
Just give me a second.
The witness hasn't been qualified as an expert in any field at this point, and he's giving opinions testimony about how a process works within different jurisdictions. Without being qualified as an expert, he's limited to factual observations that he participated in, did observe, those kind of things. He's not able to give opinions and conduct this testimony.
All right, sustained.
I'll ask the same question, but can you explain the reasoning for trying to stay within the by right development process based on your experience and knowledge in the development, real estate development?
Sure. So we've entitled several million square feet of development over the last five or six years, let's say, recently. In Atlanta, for instance, we had to re-entitle property through a public hearing process.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll just object to that. I don't know how a process like anything is what we're here for today, and I think we're all trying to improve this as quickly as possible while allowing to ask questions that might matter to this.
Well, this goes into exactly what he's testifying on, on the need to stay within the by right process, and he's explaining and giving a reason for that and why that's important in this case.
Can I ask a question?
I'm going to ask the board, do we have any questions? How do we feel? Do we want to hear this information or would you? Before we move on to another question, we have an objection right now. So...
No.
Do you, you're all good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so overruled. We would like to hear it.
Okay. So now can I ask my question?
We'll let him finish his answer.
Oh, oh, oh.
Sure, I will be real quick. In Atlanta, we went through entitling a large property on the west side. I know no one's familiar with it. I'm sorry, but that's my experience in this case. And because it was a public hearing process, it took us about two years. There's a lot of concessions you make, and so as a developer, if you can avoid having a process like that and just complying with what the city has already told you is allowed, that's what you kind of want to do unless there's a need to just completely rezone property. So it's a time and money issue. And another example would be in Seattle where we're building over 1,000 apartment units. We have to go through a similar process, and we have to agree, like, hey, 20% of these units will be set aside for affordable housing if you're in that kind of public hearing process. So it impacts the financials of every project, and it's just something you have to take into account. That's why we would prefer what we were, you know, by right development.
Okay.
And you had a question, sorry.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Okay. So there are two phrases that you said that I'm not familiar with, by right and entitlement process or procedure. What are they? Can you define them?
I apologize, and I hate to object to the question, but you know, we haven't had a qualification as an expert to actually give opinions on what the answers to this question would be. Again, this witness is a faculty, this is a doctorate, they did, they saw, they heard, but they're not qualified as an expert.
So he's using...
May I rephrase that for you?
Go ahead.
Let me hear what Mr. Portnoy has to say, one second.
I was going, and it might be what he's about to say, but I was going to say if he limits it to what he knows based on his experience, he testified he's been doing this for 15-plus years, I think her question would be fine in that situation.
The definition that you have for those words. Sure. I have to respond to this, so you want to, you want stolen to proceed, we're just going to...
I want to know what that means.
Okay, so we're going to say overruled.
We talked about entitlement last week. It's the entitlement process.
Yes.
So can he explain?
You can ask.
You've made your, you've overruled. I think the question is out there for him to answer.
Okay.
I'm not an expert. I will tell you how I view the world, and it is fair for John to know I'm not an expert. The way I view the world is it starts out very broad, and you look at a piece of property.
What does this have to do with entitlement?
Okay. It starts out very broad to explain the concepts of what I see. It starts out very broad with, we're looking at a piece of property, and the only real thing you know about it is it's zoned for something. And just because it's zoned for something, as we're all here debating, doesn't mean that you know exactly what can be built on it, right? And so the entitlement process, in my view, and what I'm saying it is, which is subject to debate, is the process of taking it from a property that's zoned for something and now saying it is entitled to build, in this case, up to 110 units or whatever. It now is a very specific process that ends up with, this is what you will build.
Okay.
That's entitlement. By right, when I say that, is look at an ordinance, and if it says you can build multifamily or single-family, and being fair, office or residence, whatever it may be, then you say, okay, as long as I'm doing that, I check that box, right? I have the right to build that under this law. And then it may have other things in it, like, for instance, 35 feet tall. I have to be under 35 feet tall. So if I design under 35 feet tall, then I have the right to do that without asking for a variance, is really what by right means. Am I asking anyone to vary a variance from the statute requirements? That's how I'm using it.
Okay, thank you.
Before I move, I just want to make sure if there's any further questions from the board.
Just continue.
So going back to that, is this desire to kind of stay out of the conditional zoning and stay within the by right process unique to this project?
No, not for us.
All right, so you mentioned a little earlier that Hatteras Sky acquired the property in November 2019. I kind of want to talk what happened after that. Can you explain or tell the board kind of what the thought process was after Hatteras Sky acquired the property?
Yeah, and I'll try to be very quick because not a lot here. In March, the pandemic occurred, and everything really shut down. And we're like any other business out there, we're scrambling to figure out what this means for our business. So we pursued certain projects and didn't pursue others. And Robin Hood, given that we had just acquired it, was one of those where we said for our 2020 business plan, there's really nothing for us to look at here. We don't know what's going on in the greater scope of the world, so we just let it sit.
All right, so obviously, we're here, though, so there's been a point where Hatteras Sky or HS Robin Hood chose to move forward with the project. Can you explain to the board kind of that process?
Sure. Towards the end of 2020, we start doing our year-end planning for the next year, and Robin Hood was a project that we said we wanted to greenlight and move forward with in terms of the entitlement process. And so we kind of started, the very beginning of 2021, the process of getting it entitled.
Can you tell the board a little bit about what that involved, that process of getting it moving forward?
Sure. That meant for us that we engaged local civil engineering firm, CDC. We spoke with our attorneys about kind of how this process would work and got them involved. Internally, we put a team together to start doing project feasibility and studies and kind of looking overall at the project, starting like January of 2021.
All right, so let's now jump to May 17, 2021, when the zoning compliance permit application and site plan was submitted. And let's start with the zoning compliance permit application. It's at RD 003, if we can pull that up. And do you have that in front of you?
I see it here.
Do you have that? All right, Mr. Cor... That's my understanding. I just handed him what I... Mr. Corden, is RD 003 the zoning compliance permit application that HS Robin Hood submitted in this case?
Yes, it is.
And I just want to walk through a few things with you. First off, did you review this zoning compliance permit application and the attached site plan before it was submitted?
Yes.
Okay. And when you see the part that says characteristics of site with requested alterations, and there's the section that says, please note?
Yes.
What was your understanding as to what that meant?
That it says what it says, that I believe would be disturbing an acre or more. So it says a zoning compliance permit application will not be approved until you provide the appropriate documentation from Buncombe County stormwater and erosion. So it's a note that says, letting you know that at some point, you'll get those prior to your approval.
Okay, and just to clarify, was it your understanding that that information was needed for purposes of submitting the application?
I read it to not require that, and we were not advised that it was required at that time.
And that was my next question. Did the town ever advise anyone at HS Robin Hood that that information was needed for purposes of submitting the zoning compliance permit application?
No.
All right, if we move down a little bit, there's a section that says, under the type of use slash cost, it says total estimated cost, and there's a money symbol in TBD. Do you see that?
Yes.
Can you explain to the board why that's there?
Well, we don't, we wouldn't, I won't, I still don't know the estimated costs in terms of what we're able to build, so in the contractor, we don't actually engage until essentially our construction permit is pulled. The way that works for us is we do guaranteed maximum price, GMP, with our contractors, and those are negotiated almost to the day of permit issue, which will be like two years from now in best case. And so we're working with the contractor on what we call pre-construction services, but that doesn't mean that would be the contractor. Outside of that, I'm not sure what the requirement there would be.
So is it fair to just say that that information is something that comes later in the process?
That's correct.
And did anyone from the town reach out to you or anyone at HS Robin Hood, to your knowledge, asking for more information on those sections?
No, again, I want to make sure I don't speak for things I don't know, but when I've typically seen things like that, there's certain small projects where contractors are not required. So sometimes if you tell them, like, and it's based on square footage, or its use, or dollar amount. So sometimes if you're doing something that's like $2,000, there's no contractor requirement. What you're doing is you're letting the city know that, but I don't know that here. I don't, that's just my speculation. But I think everyone, we're going to have a contractor. We know it's, there's no way we'd get a permit without one, so.
All right, moving down to the section that says plot plan. Do you see where it says attach site plan or draw plan accurately into scale, show dimensions of lot and located structures by dimensions from property line?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Did HS Robin Hood do that when they submitted the zoning compliance permit application?
Well, we attached the site plan. We didn't draw it.
And does the attached site plan indicate the dimensions of the structures?
So the site plan is to scale, which means you can find every dimension on the entire site plan. I think it's more thorough than actually doing that. And on a project this size, I wouldn't expect it to be any other way. None of our others are.
And then the final section actually just is certifications, correct?
Correct.
And that's what we've just gone through, is the entire zoning compliance permit application for Woodfin, correct?
That's what comes off the website. When I've looked, it's a one-pager.
Okay, is there anything in this form, zoning compliance permit application, that says you need to provide a landscape compliance plan at the time you submit it?
No.
Is there anything in this form zoning compliance permit application that says you need to provide architectural design guidelines at the time you submit the zoning compliance permit application?
No.
Is there anything in this form zoning compliance permit application that says you need to provide preliminary approval for sanitary sewer and water supply systems when you submit it?
No.
Okay. Turning again to the site plan that was attached, it consists of over 30 residential buildings. And, you know, we can minimize if possible, otherwise, I think you have it in front of you. What was your understanding as to how that plan would be reviewed by the Town of Woodfin?
My understanding was that it was administrative review of a permitted use.
And what was the basis of that understanding?
Just our reading of the code, discussions with the city, our attorneys kind of weighing in on what the code said, the language of the code.
And did anyone from the Town of Woodfin ever tell you in 2021 that this site plan would require you to go through a conditional use permit process?
No.
So based on that, what was your understanding as to whether or not multiple buildings were permitted in a mountain village residential district as of May 2021?
My understanding was that they were permitted use as long as our actual uses were multifamily and single-family homes. And that was, the intent was to build, like, you know, multifamily and single duplexes, triplexes, just homes up there for sale.
Okay, so I'd like to now jump, for looking at the timeline, there was a revised site plan that was then submitted on October 13, 2021. What was your reasoning for submitting that plan?
Is this the one right here? No, that's the same one. So the October plan, in October 2021, there was some questions that we'd received, so I know that our team was working to address some of the questions received by the town. But the biggest difference and reason for filing it was, are you going to pull it up?
I don't know if we need it right now. Sorry.
Okay. There was an additional lot that we acquired, we being Hatteras Sky. And the additional lot changed to a better entrance for the property. And so we submitted a site plan that was revised to include an entrance through the additional lot. It's just, the roads are a lot cleaner and neater that way. And they don't, you know, it's a more private entrance to the development. And so with the additional lot, we revised our site plan to kind of change the way that infrastructure was working.
Okay. There's also, if we're, if we look, it's RD 014. There's a difference in the number of residential units between the October and the May site plan. Can you explain to the board the reason for that?
Yeah, I think our team internally was looking at kind of project feasibility with, in 2021, construction costs increased anywhere across on our own projects, speaking from what I know, as much as 40% on one of our deals, and no less than 20% to 25% across the board. So I think our team was trying to react to kind of, you know, discussions with the city about how parking was working, and also while they're doing that, discussions about what, how many units should be built based on increasing project costs.
And was part of that reason for the increase in project costs all related to the pandemic and supply chain issues?
I mean, I guess, yeah. I would, that's the macro of what really causes things, but I think that's fair.
Did anyone from the Town of Woodfin ever tell you at any time in 2021 that the October 2021 revised site plan would require a conditional use permit?
No.
And when this revised site plan was submitted, did HS Robin Hood include a new zoning compliance permit application form with it?
No, the one-pager, the actual application, no.
Why not?
This is just a revision to the site plan that's attached to the application from May, sorry. We'll see if that works.
Okay, so now I want to jump ahead to the November site plan, which is RD 0226, and wanted to just talk about why that site plan was submitted.
Primarily, we were looking at amenities space and trying to understand how we wanted to design the resident amenities. And basically, we knew we wanted, like, maybe, let's talk about a swimming pool, maybe a hot tub with it. And then a couple of folks on our team, given that this is kind of a mountain area, we expect these to be second and third homes, was talking about kind of like, what if it has additional amenities like a sauna and some, you know, cold pools and things like that? Given, you know, part of this development is access to the conserved 100 acres and the walking trails and the outdoors, right? And when we put all that together, we were like, well, what will that do to the uses? Does that do something different? And we wanted to have discussions with the city specifically about, would anyone take the position that, like, somehow that became a spa? Because if you look at it, you're like, well, is that a spa? And we're saying it's for residents, it's not for hire, but we labeled as such to have discussions with the city about how they would view those amenities.
And what was the city's response to that site plan?
The response was that that would make it a conditional use by labeling it as a spa and proceeding under, with those amenities. I don't know if it was those exact amenities, but the way we presented it was a conditional use.
So what was HS Robin Hood's response to the town saying now there is a conditional use in this plan?
So we wanted to, we basically just said, well, we want to withdraw that plan. That's, we're going to revise our site plan to not include that.
Okay, and so what was the next step, then?
We submitted a revised site plan.
Okay, and is that the December 20, 2021 revised site plan?
Yes, so on December 20, we submitted a revised site plan that did not include any amenities, a spa or any of that.
Okay, and I want to actually take a step back, actually, to the November one. When the November revised site plan was submitted, did HS Robin Hood submit a zoning compliance permit application form?
No.
Why not?
Because we're just revising our site plan.
Okay, same question as to the December 20, 2021 site plan. Did HS Robin Hood submit a zoning compliance permit application form with that site plan?
No.
And again, why not?
We're just revising the site plan from the May application.
Can I ask one question? So I've always actually been meaning to ask this. So that plan there that has those four blue buildings, for example, the, what are those? I'm looking at the original one, the one that looks like this, that has all the, just the brown...
Sure.
...buildings, right?
I think they're...
That's one of the shifts, is one of those, like, the spa thing, or is that a brown? Like, what are those?
Yeah, I think each one of the colors are color coding to a different type of building. So the blue buildings are being labeled multifamily because I think they had more than three or four units in them. They might have had as... They might have had as many, I don't, we'll have to see, maybe, I think it might be listed on each building.
It's on the next one, it's on, it's on oh thirty-one.
And what I'm looking at up here, the kind of brownish-red says a proposed spa, so this is the November site plan. And then the rest of the buildings are all residential, I know that. But it might be that, like, those yellows, my recollection is those were like a single-family home. And then the blue ones would have multiple units within it. They'd be condo buildings. And the orange building we're looking at would have been maybe a triplex, like, three levels, one unit per level. So, you either get a bottom floor, the middle walk-in, or the top.
Yeah, I'm good. It was just really hard to read the copies that we have, the small print.
Yeah, they're usually a lot bigger.
Yeah, yeah.
Jumping back to the December twenty 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 twenty-one revised site plan, at that time, had the town passed the current version of the zoning code?
No.
One of the things that the petitioners have brought up are the differences between the site plans with respect to the number of units and buildings, and we've touched on this a little bit already. But I was just hoping maybe you could explain to the board why there were, in a little more detail, differences between the number of units and the types of buildings?
Yeah, so, on our end of it, we're looking at what's the most feasible project and how do we put it together? From the town side, we've had conversations where they were expressing preferences to cluster buildings together. I think, I'm gonna, John may want to, I think, I'll speak for the town, they'll be up here. The town, throughout this process, had shown a lot of, can we shrink this from disturbance, right? They wanted it clustered, or can you make it smaller? And so, a lot of what we were doing is kind of reducing building footprints and trying to, like, look at different ways to get everything done.
When you submitted the December twentieth, twenty twenty-one plan, what was your hope with regard to that submission?
That that would be the plan that we're working off of and designing and approving and building.
We're here, though, so we obviously know that one thing. Can you tell the board what happened immediately after submitting the December twentieth, twenty twenty-one revised site plan?
So, there's been, and still continues, a lot of confusion as to how this process plays out for this project, given the Mountain Village zoning. And when Adrian, who was at the time the planning director, I don't know her official title, I believe it's planning director, but if it's something different, she sent an email back after receiving this that indicated, okay, great, I'll put you on the January fifth board meeting agenda. That was what we received in response.
Just to stop you there, are you talking, if we turn to tab seven, RD zero three four? Jason, you have the binder too, if you want to turn to that as well, in front of you, RD zero three four.
Yes, I'm there.
Okay, you mentioned an email. Is it that email on the bottom from Adrian, time stamped at nine nineteen AM?
Yes.
Okay, and then this is the email where she's saying that the review of the site plan would actually go through the same process, approval process as subdivisions, correct?
That's right, yep.
Okay, was that consistent with your understanding of how the process was supposed to work if there were no conditional uses?
No, it wasn't consistent with the legal advice we had gotten from our attorneys.
So, what did you do to get clarity on that issue?
Well, I asked our attorneys to reach out to the city and get a better understanding of where was this specific guidance coming from so that we could understand what ordinance is or how they're interpreting the ordinance to require it to be this approval process versus the kind of ministerial administrative review that we'd been working from, kind of those efforts.
And you mentioned legal counsel reached out. If you turn to RD zero three nine in the record?
Yes.
Is that the letter that was sent by legal counsel to get clarity on the review process?
Yes.
And what was the ultimate outcome of that request to get clarity on the process?
So, I think our exact position was that it was administrative slash ministerial approval by the staff, based on the understanding that the planning board heard conditional uses, it heard very, requests for variances, and it heard appeals, this board, I guess, hears appeals of planning director determinations. And those are kind of the three prompts that gets it to a board consideration. And since we didn't have a conditional use, we weren't asking for a variance, and we weren't disagreeing or appealing any of Adrian's decisions. We felt like Adrian, as the staff person, would approve the entitlement process under an administrative ministerial review. So, that's what's being raised. What the ultimate, ultimately, we got back from the city, and I believe our attorneys asked to get the city attorney involved to get an interpretation of the review process as well, was that they agreed that it was an administrative ministerial review, but that it still was a planning board decision, not a staff-level decision.
And two follow-up questions on that point. You mentioned that there were, the position of the town was there weren't any conditional uses in the December twentieth, twenty twenty-one revised site plan, correct?
That's correct, I believe that's what the town told us.
And if we look at RD zero three four, back to Ms. Eisenhower's email, I just want to make sure, are you just, are you talking about the section in her email where she says, while the amended proposed plan includes permitted uses in the Mountain Village District?
Yes.
So, just to be clear, HS Robinhood was relying on her representation that they were only permitted uses in that plan, correct?
Yeah, in terms of trying to understand the approval process, right.
And then we, so, the letter from the attorney was sent on January nineteenth, correct?
The letter from our attorney was dated that day, yes.
And then, if we jump to RD zero five one in the record, and look at the email on the bottom, do you see that email?
Yes.
And is that the email from Ms. Eisenhower with the, I guess, city's new position as to what the review process is?
That's correct.
And I think you already said it, but the city's position was that it would require more review, but it would be administrative review, is that correct?
Can you re-ask it?
Yeah, I can re-ask it.
Yeah, all right, so sustain if you can re-ask it.
Oh, sorry.
Based on your review of the email and the letter that was received from the city, what was your understanding as to what the review process was?
That it was the same review process, we thought, which was ministerial slash administrative, kind of nondiscretionary, no public hearing, but that planning board would actually be the determiner of our application, not the staff.
And was that based on your understanding of Ms. Eisenhower's prior email and her email on February eleventh? Were those, was Ms. Eisenhower taking different positions from what she took previously as to the process?
Yeah, I think that the subdivision process she mentioned in December is a different process than administrative slash ministerial review.
So, in February, this is February of twenty twenty-two, you receive the city's updated position as to what the review process is. Was there anything else that HS Robinhood received from the town in February of twenty twenty-two?
Yes, so, you know, we were still confused because we went through the process and back and forth answering Ms. Eisenhower's questions to get to a point where she said in December twentieth, I'll put you, do you want to be in the January meeting? And then we went through a process for thirty days trying to figure out what that meant. We didn't believe the meeting was required, but then we got official confirmation and essentially both sides came to, okay, a slightly modified understanding for both parties, right? And even that, though, I'm sitting here and I'm saying, what is an administrative, you know, ministerial review entail? Like, I don't know, what will the planning board actually be doing was the question we asked Ms. Eisenhower. And so, in response to that, she provided an internal checklist that she had used for reviewing and approving Mountain Village projects.
And is that checklist, the checklist that's at RD zero five four and zero five five in the Record of Decision?
Yes.
Prior to receiving that check, had HS Robinhood received that checklist at any time prior to February twenty twenty-two?
No, we'd just been working off of what the, on the face of the application requirements were. And so, when we got this, you know, this has obviously got a lot more information it's asking than what's actually on the application itself.
What did HS Robinhood do, though, when it received this checklist from Ms. Eisenhower?
So, we kind of asked what it meant, like, how does this really work? Is, you know, some of these things still have room for interpretation? And so, what we did is asked some additional questions, got some answers, and decided that we would just, in order to limit the amount of conditions on our approval, because that was kind of our understanding of the process, is you get a conditional approval if you don't have certain things, some of these don't apply to every project, was my understanding and is my understanding. And so, we just kind of started hiring, we hired more, you know, we hired an architect and a designer to make sure that the amount of detail required here, we were thinking ahead in terms of what we would actually have built so that when we laid out everything to meet all of these requirements, it was pretty much done. Like, there was nothing else left for us to do, so we hired some additional consultants in, you know, March, April.
And just for the board's sake, can you identify those consultants?
So, one is, we went ahead and got a new detailed topo survey and tree survey of the entire property, since we're talking about, you know, landscaping on here. We also hired, and we kind of went through a request for proposal process for architectural firms, hired an architectural firm to start working on vertical elements of this design to make sure that they all worked within all the height limitations that we had been, you know, indicating that we were limited to. And I think we engaged SiteWork Studios is the name, a landscape architect, or later in the process, to meet all the requirements here, so that, again, what we submitted to the planning board would have hardly any conditions to the approval, is what we wanted.
And you've hit on it a little bit, but was it your understanding that this information was required at the time the zoning compliance permit application was submitted?
No.
Okay, what was your understanding as to the purpose of this checklist?
This was in direct response to our question of what will the board actually be looking at for this ministerial review that we, we've called it a ministerial administrative review, but that means there's like, it's objective. It doesn't, it does, it's not subjective. And so, we wanted to know, what objective criteria will the board consider so that we're, like, we know what the roadmap is, like, we don't have any, we didn't want to engage in a protracted back and forth with the board trying to read people's minds. We just wanted to know, like, give us the list and we'll tackle it.
So, again, just to reiterate, you received this list, you go do the RFP for architects, you hire an architect firm, and hire some other consultants, and can you tell the board kind of what the next plan, what the plan or the next steps were for HS Robinhood at that time?
Well, it was just to get everything put together and submit a revised site plan that met all of these requirements so that when we went before the planning board, it would hopefully be a very easy decision for them.
And had HS Robinhood incurred any fees or cost in doing that?
I think beyond, kind of, on this exact step here, it was probably around seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars.
And you're talking about on the step to kind of address the items in the checklist, is that what you're referring to?
That's correct, like, to get a full topo, engage architecture and have drawings, you know, landscape design, all of the things in this checklist.
So, as you're doing that, I now want to jump to what is tab seventeen, RD zero six eight. And this is a letter that HS Robinhood received in July, I believe it's dated July eighth, but received on July thirteenth of twenty twenty-two, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and in this letter, Ms. Eisenhower says the zoning application submitted in May twenty twenty-one was no longer valid, and that the town was going to rezone the property, is that accurate?
Yeah, she writes, your original development application was received on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and following several revisions was put on hold on January sixth at the request of the applicant.
And the intent then, in the next paragraph, talks about rezoning the property, is that accurate?
That's right, it says that it's a rezoning hearing is scheduled for August second, twenty twenty-two.
And again, HS Robinhood received this on July thirteenth, correct?
I believe that's the day, yeah. We didn't receive it until several days after the date of the letter.
Just to confirm, the email that's RD zero zero, RD zero six six in the record, is that the email to which Ms. Eisenhower attached that letter?
Yes.
And that email is dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, correct?
Yep, Wednesday, July thirteenth.
So, prior to receiving this letter, had anyone from the town of Woodfin informed HS Robinhood that the zoning compliance permit application submitted in May of twenty twenty-one was at risk of being discontinued under the statute that Ms. Eisenhower references in the letter?
No.
Prior to receiving this letter, had anyone from the town of Woodfin informed you that the town planned to rezone the property?
No.
So, what was your overall reaction to receiving this letter?
I lost a little bit of sleep for a night or two, and was very surprised and immediately, you know, wanted to review, like, how, when did this occur? So.
So, what, I guess, you were confused, you were surprised, what did HS Robinhood do in response?
We had our legal counsel review the file and send a response letter to the city with the facts as we, as we saw them.
Okay, and is that what's behind, it's tab eighteen, but starting RD zero seven zero to RD zero seven seven, is that the letter you're referring to?
Yes, it is.
And then, to your understanding, was there a meeting between the town and council for HS Robinhood?
Yes.
And what was the outcome of that meeting?
The city changed its position in a subsequent letter to us.
Okay, and for the record, if we go to tab nineteen, it's RD zero seven nine, is that the new determination that Ms. Eisenhower issued on July twentieth, twenty twenty-two?
Yes, it is.
What would HS Robinhood have done if the town did not actually change its position on the validity of the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one zoning application?
We would have appealed that determination to this board.
What did happen, though, since the city did retract its position, what did HS Robinhood do after that?
So, the letter says that our application remains valid at least until August eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And I believe that date just comes from the fact that the town attorney sent us the official, kind of, here's the process, on February eleventh of twenty twenty-two. So, I think it just added six months to that. And so, it just says here, as a result, it will remain valid at least until that. I said, then we're not going to submit any revised site plan after that date. We're gonna go ahead and submit everything that they're asking for, because we were almost ready anyways. And so, I said, okay, we've got, let's finish up everything over the next two weeks, and we submitted the revised application site plan with showing everything in this checklist on August eighth.
Again, you've hit on it a little bit, but what was the reason for making sure everything that applied in the checklist was included in this August eighth site plan?
Well, originally, we just wanted to be thorough and wanted to reduce any back and forth with the planning board. And then, after the July letter, where we were kind of taken off guard with certain talent. town positions, we wanted to leave no doubt as to full compliance with everything the city had asked us for. So it was very important that if, if this is in the checklist, we're not even going to remotely question the applicability, we're just going to overly show details to, to say that we have hit everything. We didn't want in any way, shape or form for anyone to say that we had not complied with this August eleventh date.
And if you turn to, uh, the site plan, um, submitted on August eighth, it would be, um, it starts at RD zero eight one is the full package. There's a, um, some differences with respect to the number and location of buildings, I was just wondering if you could explain to the board why that's the case?
Um, so, obviously, we started working and talking to the city a little more about some things that we felt were going on outside of approval of our project on kind of a non-discretionary review. And again, this concept of let's get things more clustered, um, was something we were hearing. Um, I, I won't comment anymore on what the city's thoughts were in those meetings and concerns, but it was a concern relayed to us, so we kind of went with that.
So just to clarify, your, your testimony is that you were addressing comments and recommendations from the city?
Yeah, I mean, we were very concerned that with positions taken by the city, so if the city was asking us to do something, we wanted to, to comply.
Okay, and in, in the August, uh, submission that was, August eighth submission, there was also the, uh, landscape compliance plan. Um, can you, I think you've touched on it a little bit, but can you explain to the board in a little more detail why that was included for the first time in this, uh, submission?
Because it was on the checklist that was given to us. And, and this is, it said, this is be the objective checklist that the board's going to review, and since we can go ahead and prepare something that limits the conditions or, um, matters before the board, more information, less conditions is where we wanted to be.
What was the overall intent for landscaping for this property?
Well, um, is to keep everything as natural as possible, so with, kind of consistent with the theme of having conserved, um, you know, most of that mountain, we wanted this development to kind of have that same look and feel that it was fitting in to whatever the indigenous landscape was. So in terms of design and build, we wanted to be able to position these so that they just fit within the kind of tree canopies. Um, we didn't want, we're not, we didn't want it like a golf course neighborhood up there, where you have all these nice flowers and hedges. This was to be more of a natural kind of spot.
So that gets us to August eighth, twenty twenty-two, um, and HS Robinhood submits the revised site plan. Did HS Robinhood submit a zoning compliance permit application form with this site plan?
No.
Again?
Just a revised site plan.
And why not?
This is relating to our May seventeenth application.
All right, so again, we're at August eighth, twenty twenty-two, um, submit that site plan, can you tell the board what happened after HS Robinhood submitted this revised site plan?
Um, so, we obviously followed up to make sure that the town received it within kind of this maybe deadline that was in the July twentieth letter. It wasn't a hard, it didn't, maybe it was a hard deadline, maybe it wasn't, but since we submitted a couple of days prior, we were trying to follow up to make sure that if the city had any additional questions or something that we had not done correctly that was going to cause any issues with respect to our compliance with the July twenty letter, we wanted to know. And so what we received back was, you know, no questions, everything's fine, uh, and that we would be placed on the October meeting agenda for the planning board. So this was August, um, and, and we're on the October meeting. We were trying to be on the September meeting, but I think since we kind of submitted August eighth, I think Adrian, Ms. Eisenhower, felt like there wasn't enough time to get everything together, so she just made us wait till October.
So was HS Robinhood actually informed by someone from the town that it would be on the October fourth, twenty twenty-two planning board meeting?
Yes.
And who was that?
Uh, Ms. Eisenhower emailed out, I believe, that we would be on that October fourth meeting agenda.
And after you learned, uh, that you'd be on the October fourth planning board agenda, what happened?
Um, so, I believe in early September, so this is maybe three or four weeks after we submitted, um, there had been changes within the town of Woodfin staff, and I believe Ms. Tuck was kind of taking over the role that Ms. Eisenhower had played in. And, um, Mr. Henning, who's the, I don't know, is the town's attorney, or at least, I don't know the official role, how's that, but he's the attorney that we were working with for the town, um, kind of, had, wanted to have a meeting with our attorneys to discuss some issues.
Okay, and did, did a meeting actually take place with the town and, between the town and HS Robinhood in September?
Yes.
And, uh, can you tell the board what was discussed at that meeting?
I'll just inject this foundation as to the latest to whether Mr. Gordon was at that meeting. I think that meeting could be delayed or postponed.
All right, so staying, you confirmed that he was there?
Did you participate in that?
Yeah, I was at the meeting.
Okay, can you tell the board what happened at that meeting?
So, um, the, the town raised the issue of believing this could possibly be a group, what we've been talking about, a group development for the first time, and that since it was a group development, or potentially a group development, we never got a, a final determination on that issue, right? We just understood that the town was raising it, and at the meeting, we kind of discussed that that was potentially the town's position, given that there were multiple buildings.
What was your reaction to that position that was being asserted by the town?
I was, again, kind of, I was very confused and frustrated.
Why's that?
Well, this is nineteen months after we began a process of submitting these site plans showing multiple buildings and getting confirmation that this was not a conditional use within Mountain Village. And so, you know, we spent money to get to here and time, and we've kind of felt like we might have wasted nineteen months.
So prior to September of twenty twenty-two, had anyone from the town informed HS Robinhood that a plan with multiple buildings would require a conditional use permit?
No, no.
I'm going to go ahead and pre-mark this as Exhibit twelve. And you was being pre-marked as Exhibit twelve, you could just take a minute, uh, review this document and let me know once you've had, once you have had a chance to do so.
I reviewed this.
Do you recognize this document?
Yes, it was forwarded to me.
Okay, can you tell the board what it is?
Um, this is an email from Mr. Henning on September ninth, basically confirming the town's position that they believe it meets the definition of a group development and outlining, um, you know, some options. And then there's also a part of this where, um, the town had mentioned for the first time, uh, a short-term rental designation being a potential problem, or is a problem, or a problem.
Okay.
And that they're prohibited in Mountain Village per Chapter thirty of this Woodfin ordinance.
And at this time, I'd like to move to admit Exhibit twelve into the record.
Josh, do you have one more copy?
Oh, yeah.
Got four.
Okay.
The board have any questions? Okay, then, yes, we will admit this as, we said, what, twelve?
Exhibit twelve, yeah.
Exhibit twelve, so property owners, Exhibit twelve, in evidence. Uh, please proceed, Mr. Corden.
All right, and you, you mentioned a, a couple items, um, one related to short-term rentals. Um, prior to this email, uh, had the town taken any position as to, uh, whether short-term rentals were permitted or not in Mountain Village zoning district?
Uh, yes, in, in, um, late twenty twenty-one, when we were submitting our December revised site plan, I believe Ms. Eisenhower communicated that short-term rentals were permitted in Mountain Village.
So was this email consistent with that position you received, uh, back in twenty twenty-one from Ms. Eisenhower?
Uh, on that particular point, it is not consistent.
Okay, and again, you discussed it, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And when was that original email? Um, do you have that reference?
Yeah, let me. Mr. Corden, um, while you're turning there, if you're there, do you see the email from Ms. Eisenhower with the timestamp of eight twenty-three AM on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one?
Yes, I do.
Is that the email you're talking about from Ms. Eisenhower?
Yeah, in this email, um, she's writing to our, um, civil engineering firm and says, "This email also confirms that short-term rentals are allowed in the Mountain Village District," and that's December twenty-first, that's when we were submitting our December twenty site plan.
Okay, so just to be clear for the record, in December of twenty twenty-one, HS Robinhood was informed that short-term rentals were permitted, correct?
That's right, we were told that our site plan, December twentieth, had no conditional uses and short-term rentals were permitted, and we, that was December twenty, and then this email is December twenty-first.
Okay, so that, and just want to clarify, there's two issues there, there's short-term rental and the conditional use component, correct?
That's correct.
And up until, uh, the September twenty twenty-two timeframe, is it correct that HS Robinhood had been told that no conditional uses were in the plans other than that November twenty twenty-one plan with the lodge and spa facility, correct?
That's correct, other than a November twenty twenty-one plan where we indicated a, a spa slash lodge building, there had never been any indication that our plan had a conditional use in it.
And had there been any indication that a plan with multiple buildings would constitute a group development requiring a conditional use permit until, up until September of twenty twenty-two?
No, not under the Mountain Village ordinance.
So what was your overall reaction when you received this email from the town on September, uh, ninth, twenty twenty-two?
Um, was to reschedule another meeting with the town to, to kind of meet and do a property tour, so we could start kind of removing...
Sorry, do you have a question?
No, I don't have a question for him.
Yeah, okay. Uh, we wanted to meet with the town and kind of start removing obstacles and saying, what is it we're supposed to do, if you'd please help us, it'd be great.
Okay, so did you ultimately meet with the town?
Yes.
And were you in attendance at that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, where did that meeting take place?
So it took meeting in our attorney's offices and onsite, onsite at the property.
And what was discussed at those meetings?
Um, I walked the property with Ms. Tuck and, and started asking her questions specific to, um, a layout regarding one building and, and wanting her to see where it would be, wanted to understand how it'd be shaped, wanted her to kind of see how it laid on the land for purposes of any questions she might have with the kind of express intention of saying, "We, we believe, we disagree with the determinations you've made, but we're also willing to revise our site plan to have this one building, and it's important that we're on site so that as we're submitting that revised site plan, she kind of knows exactly why and what we're doing and had been on site to see it." And, um, as a, kind of a result of that meeting, we had our law firm then follow up and ask in writing for the determinations that are at issue here.
Okay, and you just mentioned that determine, you had the law firm, uh, reach out, if you turn to, it's tab twenty-one, RD one oh eight to one oh nine, um, are those, is that the request from the law firm that you were just discussing?
What's that, RD?
Uh, one oh eight and one oh nine.
Yes, this is the follow-up email that our attorney sent to the town, kind of summarizing our, uh, meeting the prior day. Beau, who's sending this, was at all the meetings, and he, he kind of laid this out.
And then in response to this email and what you discussed at the meeting, my understanding is that Ms. Tuck issued her September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two determination that's at issue in this appeal, correct?
That's, that's my understanding, that's correct.
And that's what's, uh, in the record out, RD one eleven to one twelve, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What did HS Robinhood do after, uh, it received Ms. Tuck's determination dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two?
We worked to revise the site plan to include, uh, the, the, the results of her kind of official determination here, being one building, um, consolidating everything for purposes of meeting what she told us here to do.
Okay, and before you submitted any type of, uh, site plan that consolidated the dwelling units into a single building, did you have any further communications with, uh, Ms. Tuck?
Uh, yes, we did. So one thing we wanted to make sure was that nothing we were doing was going to jeopardize our May seventeenth application. And what I mean by that is, there had been, uh, we were just passingly aware of a position that the town had taken, Woodfin had taken in another case, not here, where, uh, it was being treated. We didn't understand the facts, I still don't understand the facts, the only thing I heard was that filing this, they may take a new position that says you've now invalidating all of your previous application and site plan. So we just wanted to make sure that before we did anything else, we got confirmation from the city that, yes, what we were doing was exactly what we were supposed to do in terms of, you know, complying with our back and forth exchanges, knowing that everything was relating to our May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, application.
And are you referring to the, uh, communications that are in the record at RD one eighteen to RD one twenty-two?
That's right, yeah, this is the kind of email exchange.
And at the top of RD, uh, one twenty-one, it's an email from Mr. Carpenter, who's legal counsel for, uh, HS Robinhood, correct?
That's correct.
And in that email, he says, "My client is putting the finishing touches on the revised plan referenced in your September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two letter. Before submitting, we would like to confirm that the revised plan will not void the original May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two application," I believe that's a typo, "uh, and permit, uh, permit choice would remain in place and the revised plan would not be considered new," correct?
That's correct.
And in response, Ms. Tuck responded, uh, at one fourteen PM on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, "We understand that your intent is to submit a revision to the May seventeenth," again, two thousand two, um, so typo there, "application. When submitting through the portal, please make sure you select the zoning compliance application option and add a description that this is a revision to the May seventeenth, twenty twenty, application," correct?
Yes.
Okay, and just for clarity, I believe there's been several years in there, but that was all in reference to the twenty twenty-one application, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then you responded directly, actually, saying, "Hi, Shannon, I think Beau was asking several questions that you did not answer, we would like very clear answers, can you please answer his questions? Thanks, Jason," is that correct?
Yeah, this is basically about the only email I've ever sent directly, because I wanted to make sure that everything was... wanted to make sure that everything was locked down, that I'm not seeing any movement from the town's positions on what we're about to do, so I wanted to have it very clear.
And just to be clear, at this time, were you familiar with the group CRLU in this case?
Yes.
And were you aware that they had newsletters on their website?
Yes.
And had you reviewed those newsletters?
Yes.
And were you aware that they were talking about a legal campaign at this time?
Yes.
And so then, going back to the email, RD, at RD 119, Mr. Henning actually responds and says, hi Jason, I believe Shannon was trying to answer the practical question of how to go about submitting the revised plan. To address the legal questions directly, I can share with you that if submitted as advised, the revised plan, one, will not void the original application, two, will not affect the date of the original application, and three, will not be considered a new application. Did I read that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, so you received that confirmation from Mr. Henning, it looks like actually, though, Mr. Carpenter sent a follow-up email at 3:16 p.m. to which Ms. Tuck actually responded, and that's at the top of 118, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and Ms. Tuck says, hi Beau, I agree with all points in John's last response, we have your client's project tentatively scheduled for the November 1, 2022 planning board meeting, pending confirmation of the revised site plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you now have confirmation from Mr. Henning and Ms. Tuck that submitting this revised site plan will not affect the May 2021 zoning compliance permit application, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so what did HS Robinhood do now that it's received written confirmation from both Ms. Tuck and Mr. Henning?
We submitted a revised site plan consolidating the development into a single building.
What would HS Robinhood have done if it did not receive these confirmations from Ms. Tuck or Mr. Henning?
We would have kept asking, as we were doing here, to make sure until we got crystal, no way to wiggle around on these issues. We'd have continued to ask the questions until we received that we had here, and had we received something different that would have said this would have invalidated our original application or in any way, shape, or form, you know, jeopardized our May 17th, 2021 application, we would have not taken any action and appealed any of these determinations on that issue.
But with these in hand, again, you said HS Robinhood proceeded with submitting the October 18th, 2021 revised site plan, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, and are you familiar with how much HS Robinhood spent to revise the site plan to consolidate the dwelling units into the single building?
I believe it was somewhere, give or take $50,000.
Okay, so now we are at October 18th, 2022, HS Robinhood has submitted the consolidated site plan, let's talk about what happened after that.
So we submitted, and then as we were in August, we wanted to follow up with Ms. Tuck and ask, did you get it, do you see any issues, let us know if there's anything else we need to do. And we didn't receive any response on that, but we did receive Ms. Tuck's staff recommendation to the planning board, which recommended approval of our project subject to, I believe, two, maybe three, very small conditions that were not a problem, so we said, great, like, we felt like we had done something, I think.
And if you look at, in the record at RD 169 and 170, is that the staff report you're just referring to?
Yes, it is.
And at RD 170, it has staff recommendations, and it says, based on the staff's review, the proposed Robinhood development complies with the minimum technical standards in place at the time of application, staff recommends approval with the minor corrections noted in staff report, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so that, you received the staff report, and then, I can't remember if you testified to this, was it placed on an agenda for the planning board to?
It was placed on the November 2022 planning board agenda.
Okay, and was the plan approved at that meeting in accordance with the staff's recommendations?
No, the, the planning board stayed their decision for several months.
Can you tell the board, just so they have a better understanding as to exactly what occurred at that meeting?
So I believe that this appeal.
I'll just object to relevance here, I don't think that determination or that hearing has anything to do with the appeals and issues that are before this board, I don't think we can spend time on that, because also that it didn't occur to the board, so that's in state, so access that we can move forward.
I think this goes into everything that was going on behind the scenes with HS Robinhood, it's not going to be a very lengthy questioning, I think it's one question, and that's probably all I have on that one issue for them.
All right, I think I would like to hear this answer from you guys.
Yeah.
So overruled, please continue.
Yeah, the appeal here was filed several days before the meeting, and when we went to the meeting, the agenda item for our, our development was moved to the very beginning prior to any public comments, and the planning board did a motion and, without anyone presenting anything, to stay their decision for, I believe, 90 days to February, their February meeting.
And it was stayed in response to the petitioner's appeal, is that correct?
Objection as to the reasons the board stated, I mean, that was something you had asked before, well, we have testified here.
Were you, were you at the planning board meeting?
Sustained, rephrase it, please.
Were you at the planning board meeting?
I attended that meeting, yes.
Did the board state why they were staying their decision to review the plan?
They wanted to wait for the outcome of this appeal.
After this appeal, did you, or anyone on behalf of HS Robinhood, attempt to reach out to CRLU in this case?
We have.
And what's been the outcome of that?
We have wanted to engage in discussions to see if we could address issues, and our...
Mr. Chair, again, I don't think this is relevant to the issues that are on appeal, Ms. Tuck's determination, I think we've got a lot to make, to get through, but we shouldn't stick to the issue of the relevant, we feel not the conversation to make the developer, the folks.
This is a very short question, but it also goes to one of the arguments we are
making in this appeal, that the CRLU had an agenda to do, engage in a legal campaign even prior to Ms. Tuck issuing her determinations in this case.
Overruled, I'd like to hear this one, please.
We have not been successful in being able to set up any discussions with CRLU.
Can you tell the board what HS Robinhood's just ultimate plans are with the property at issue in this case?
We're going to develop it into, our plan is luxury condominiums that will be a for-sale product sold to homeowners.
Is the proposed development expected to be a boarding house?
I will object to being able to answer that question, this is within the scope of being an expert or qualified as such, it's not a factual statement, and he's not a qualified answer to that.
All right, sustained.
I mean, we've had definitions of what a boarding house is here, so I think based on that, he'd be able to testify as to whether or not the plan is or is not.
Definitions have been related to individuals who are qualified as experts in the field to talk about those, and it's not this one, I don't think he can talk about it, or could obviously read from a dictionary or another source to answer the question, but he asked him, will this be a boarding house, that's asking.
If he owns the property, wouldn't he need to know what his internal use is?
Yeah, so, I know we said sustained on your objection, and I guess I want to ask the board, in my opinion, we could actually overrule because we want to hear what, in the witness's opinion, what this is going to be, because since he's the one applying for application, do we agree with that?
And he's building and developing the property.
Yes, okay, so overruled on that objection, I'm not, I'm going to let you speak in a second, we want to keep this to the witness's opinion, not a expert testimony, and Mr. Nor...
If I may, the fact of what you just said, Mr. Chairman, his opinion, only experts can offer opinions. If you're not qualified as an expert, you can give factual testimony about what you saw, what you did, what you heard, to your fault, only experts can offer opinion testimony.
Okay, so, I would like to...
So, to do our objection, and if I may, this is from the Smith versus Childs case, an expert, an expert is not allowed, even an expert is not allowed to testify with a particular legal standard or legal term of art toward that issue.
I don't understand how that's applicable if he had an expert supposedly testify on those issues, he's now saying that his experts actually should be disqualified on that exact issue.
All right, so Mr. Golden, I'm going to ask the question because...
Here's, here's, let me, I'll just read this to you, because I'm not going to give you the answer, but if the witness is not testifying as an expert, his testimony in the form of opinions or inferences is limited to those opinions or inferences which are a, rationally based on the perception of the witness, and b, helpful to a clear understanding of his testimony or determination of a fact in issue, that's Rule 701, opinion testimony of lay witnesses.
All right, so based upon, based upon that information, let's see how I can word this, so do you have an objection right now that's out, or we're...
Yeah, I'm still objecting, I think you had overruled a prior one, I'm redoing it, but...
All right, so, we want to hear the information, I'm sorry.
And I think we can still overrule based on what we just heard.
Yes, based upon that, we can overrule, just, I'm going to ask you to rephrase it so that the witness is answering the facts, not his professional opinion, makes sense?
Yeah, and I'm going to answer...
Are we okay with that?
I'm going to answer slowly and pause so that if Mr. Nor needs to make an objection, he can. My experience in this city, the Buncombe County area, is we're building three hotels, not this property. So my personal experience is building hotels in this market, and we're not building a hotel, or, we, I have built a hostel before that could kind of feel like a boarding house, it's in New Orleans, right on Canal Street, that's kind of a boarding house, so my personal experience is building something like that, it's building, in this area, three hotels currently, nationwide, Hatteras Sky is building approximately 1,500 multifamily apartment units that I'm involved with, and in this city, we're actually investors in another luxury condominium development, so within that experience, we're building condominiums on the side of the mountain, we're not building a boarding house like we have previously built in New Orleans, we're not building hotels as we are right now doing in Asheville, we're building condominiums like we are investors in in Asheville, so...
Just a few other questions, I know we've talked a little bit about the short-term rental issue and Ms. Eisenhower's determination in December, and then Ms. Tuck's determination, and my understanding is there's still kind of an outstanding appeal out there on that issue, correct?
Yes, there is.
What's your understanding it, from talking to Ms. Tuck, as to what that process is, and can you tell the board what's going on with that?
So condominiums or single-family homes, and I'm just making sure I look at Mr. Nor in case I overstep, my experience working with short-term rentals is that it's something that the, the owner of a particular unit decides if they want to rent it out or not, and that's very common in condominiums like what we're doing to have, for the owners to have that right. As I had said, we're investors in other projects in the Asheville area that are what we'll call luxury condominiums with certain floors that have short-term rentals in them, they're not a hotel. And for our development here, in speaking with real estate agents locally, and this is obviously a bigger issue than our development...
I was objecting to, I think local real estate agents would say to me, you're saying...
Fair enough, what I was going to suggest is our, our, I'm sorry...
Sustained.
Yeah, yeah, I will, our real estate agents, in terms of my role of determining project feasibility at that time, have wanted to, had wanted to preserve the rights of the owners to offer these potentially a short-term rental available, okay? And so that's why we had spent time on it, is to keep that option available for the ultimate owners. And so relying on Mrs. Eisenhower's email from December of 2021, we have, we had listed that in our plan, these are short-term rental eligible. When Ms. Tuck issued and came and said she doesn't believe that Mountain Village Residential District allows short-term rentals in it, period, and her interpretation of the code, we just said, well, the question we have is, when you look at Article 30, and I'm looking to John Nor, I don't want to overstep, when you look at the language of Article 30, it says, it has requirements in it about where short-term rentals can be, and it just has this generic thing, you can do short-term rentals in other residential districts, and since this is called Mountain Village Residential District, we really wanted to just preserve the right for everyone, whether short-term rentals are indeed allowed in residential districts like Mountain Village Residential District, that's what we were preserving.
And have you had any conversations with Ms. Tuck about whether or not the issue of short-term rentals is part of the, what we have called today, the entitlement process?
Yes, so in terms of why we've removed short-term rental from the most recent revised site plan, is discussions with the city and the city attorney, whereas that, these are two separate processes, so there is, as we started our day with, the entitlement process, and then there's some time after that, and I think it could be 50 years later, the residents of this particular subdivision, there is a process in the code, I don't know how it applies, I'm not here to comment on it, where residents of a particular subdivision can anytime decide, you know what, we would like to have short-term rentals in this subdivision, so it's, I agree with the city that they are two separate, not related things, and therefore we said, fine, if we ever needed to fight that battle, it'll just be a different venue and a different issue altogether, and that's why we just said, we'd just like to preserve that, move on with entitling this property.
That's all I have for you right now.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You can tell, you can ask, go ahead, you don't have to ask, Mr.
Oh, geez, we're sorry, I would like to ask you a question. Originally, when you first started talking, you said that your company purchased 100-plus acres in that area, only 16 of them are now, are in this process. What are your plans for the rest of that land?
So, we were investors in the prior company that bought the 100 and say, 16 acres, that then subdivided it into this 16-acre parcel, the, call it 100-acre parcel that's been conserved, and one other property that's residential part of a Ventana neighborhood up above, so there's like, actually, this was actually subdivided into four parcels, the one that I didn't mention, we, we don't control, so it's like a two-acre something, I don't know. When Hatteras Sky bought the 16-acre property in November of 2019, we then later bought the 100-acre property from our kind of former invest, you know, kind of company. Our, our plan for the full 100 acres is, there is a permanent conservation easement on that property, it's exactly what CRLU would want to see happen with the entire property, we conserve the 100 acres, to put that in the context, that's something the size of, that's larger than the Beaver Lake Park down below, that's approximately the size of the golf course, and so we're doing nothing with that property, and it's not that we're doing nothing with it, it's that we can't do anything with it, nor can anyone ever in the future...
And I'll just object to giving, but essentially, now it's going to be looking at what someone could do with another related piece of property.
All right, so let me, let me step in on your question a little bit, so is this other 100-acre property deed restricted?
Yes, it's completely deed restricted by a recorded conservation easement, anyone here can read it, you don't need a legal opinion to see, there's literally nothing you can do with it.
That answers my question.
It's conserved, it's a part of our mission as well as CRLU's mission, we share that mission, and it's a good one.
Your objection I didn't answer, correct?
You did not, I'm sorry.
At this point, I am fine with this, just, I can ask my question while I cross it.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that, I apologize.
And I want to make sure there's no other questions from the board, but based on what Ms. Hoffman asked, I want to also touch base with my client, just to make sure there's no other questions based on that.
So I didn't, is it okay?
No, yeah, please, no, thank you.
No, that was great.
I have an... I, I have another question.
Mr. Porter, when we come back. Go ahead, we're waiting for you.
Oh, sorry, if you're asking, I...
You can ask the question.
No, I don't, we're gonna wait.
Okay.
Sure all parties are valid. You're up next.
Thank you.
Is everybody on the board okay to finish the cross-examination before we take a break?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You're good. We're gonna have one more question before you...
One more question. To your knowledge, how many applications have been submitted to the town?
So there was one application, that one-page document was submitted on May 17th, 2021.
And that's the only one?
That's the only application filed. You see, a part of that is attach a site plan.
Right, no, no, no.
The differences are revised site plans.
You answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I have nothing further. May, obviously, on redirect after Mr. Nor goes, but nothing at this time.
I know you shoot for seven, but I will say this would be a logical time for your dinner break if you wanted to take a nap.
All right, so you think it's gonna be a little while with your...
I think it would be more than thirty minutes, but I can't promise one way or the other. I just wanted to go all three now.
We're good?
Yeah.
All right, so let's take a recess until five, ten, fifteen, make it six fifty by that clock, about fifteen minutes. We'll take a recess.
Patrice, do you want to look at, part of the record, I believe, is the town of Woodfin zoning code? That's what you said you wanted to look at? I don't know where, I don't know where it is in whose guy.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm not gonna...
Yeah, I'll see if I can.
Yeah, they, they refer to it a couple times in there.
Oh, hey, guys, I, I still remember.
Do you have a copy of the, as part of the record of decision, this was...
So the county board makes, Ms. Hoffman, do you have copies too, that that was also...
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just asked for a Mountain Village zoning plan. For the town, so we all know when we make a decision.
You've got the, you've exhibited your record of decision, the zoning ordinance is...
I just wanted to know. Okay.
Yeah, one of the board members just wanted to say, where's, I want to look at one of those exhibits. To see, uh, in the, in the zoning.
Okay.
Do you know what time he sent me back? Uh, I think he just gave us twenty minutes. So it's gonna be ten till seven? Yep.
Hey, whack that gavel!
A little warm, a little cold, a little warm, a little cold outside.
Oh, cold?
Good up here compared to...
It's hot in there. It's hot in there.
Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all. The business. I was just saying, oh, that's. That's the way I like it. And you might have a decent restaurant. Yeah. I remember. It's a good job there. And that's a good job there. It's going to start it all.[699.12]
I'd like to ask about a couple of other things here. I'm going to move forward to the, I think you were asked about the January 19th letter. I've thrown that up on the screen there. I believe or recall that your testimony was that this was a clarification letter that your counsel had sent to the town, correct?
Um, I'm not sure what's meant exactly by clarification, but it's certainly a request by us for clarification on certain issues.
Okay. And I guess my question is, is in that document, you may might want to flip to it, 039. Where are you asking the town to clarify versus advocating for a position?
Um, what was it? I wanted to just-
Yeah, the citation is RD 039.
Yeah, let me just look through it and see if, and do you mind repeating that question?
I will. My question is, where in the letter do you all request a clarification or question from the town versus advocating for a legal position?
It may very well be that we were advocating for our legal position of what we believe the ordinance required.
So a more accurate description of this letter might be, you know, essentially an advocacy piece on your position versus requesting clarification.
Um, I don't have a reason to overly disagree with that. One thing that may provide some insight to it is, our attorneys were having, you know, discussions with the town that resulted in us feeling that there was a need for us to put a position in writing to send to the town to advance discussions to get to, we need an official legal position back from the town around kind of this process.
Okay. One of the other things you talked about was a letter from the, I think the lawyer that was representing the town at the time, Sam Craig, a letter that came back from him in response to this letter that we're talking about here, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And I'm just going to throw that up on the screen. This is RD 046. I'll just highlight a few things here. Please let me know if I read this incorrectly. There is, and I'm reading the underlined portion in red, quote, "There is no indication in the 2021 code to imply administrative only approval of Mountain Village master plans." Did I read that correctly?
That's correct, and I think that's consistent with what we were, with what they, we've ultimately agreed to, is our position was it was administrative approval by staff.
This letter says there's nothing to imply administrative only approvals, correct?
And I think in the course of the discussions with the town and the town's attorney, we were asking specifically, why are we going to a planning board? Why is this not a staff-only administrative approval? And again, this letter is saying there's nothing that would indicate it's, it's going to go before the board, and everything that we had discussed with the city, all the way up to the actual planning board meeting we went to in November, that's exactly what even Mr. Henning has said very clearly to the board, is that this is an administrative nondiscretionary approval process.
Well, I think what I just heard you say, if I heard that, is that you heard it's administrative, but this letter says-
For the planning board, not for the staff, excuse me, sorry.
Okay. Let's, skipping down a sentence there, and I'll read from it. It says, "As a matter of law, initial Mountain Village master plans submitted to the town's planning board must be approved by at least the planning board, while proposed changes to the approved master plan must meet further requirements set forth in Exhibit A." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So here again, you're being told that at least that approval is required, not that that's the only approval that is required.
That's exactly why we continue to ask more questions to get the checklist, so that we would understand exactly what was coming out of this letter, because we did still have questions about what does this really mean? And that's what came out, and that's why we continued discussions with the city.
Well, and I want to, I'm glad you mentioned the checklist. Again, I think your testimony was that you had not been provided the checklist prior to February of 2022, is that correct?
Yeah, I hadn't, HS Robinhood had not received that checklist until February. I hadn't seen it.
I'm showing you a portion of 54-249, which is the Mountain Village ordinance that was in place when you purchased the property. I'm going to read a section from it. It says, "The master plan shall provide all information indicated on the town's master plan checklist." Did I read that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. So in the ordinance at the time, it indicated that a checklist existed, correct?
According to that language, yes, but it's not provided in the ordinance.
Where did you, when and what email did you all request the checklist?
I, I don't know if the emails requested the checklist. It might have been phone calls with our counsel asking questions as a follow-up to that letter, but it was in February of 2022.
And I want to be clear about this. You said might have been, are you aware of any emails or phone calls that requested this checklist?
I believe there's emails in the record of how we got it, but I don't know how, how that originated. I think that might have been phone call clarifications. I am not 100% certain. It wasn't me that did that.
And I was, it wasn't you that did that. Prior to February of 2022, when did you all request the checklist?
Well, I'm saying I did never, I have never requested a checklist. We've only submitted the application to the city and asked, what do we need to do? Do you have follow-up questions? Nothing was ever provided in response to those questions, so we were proceeding under that and getting responses like, okay, do you want to be on the next board meeting agenda for this? Yes, okay, or no, right?
So if I'm hearing you correctly, though, to your knowledge, your personal knowledge, you're not aware of any requests for the checklist prior to February 2022?
I don't believe so. If there's something in the record that suggests that, I don't, I know that HS Robinhood never got it. We got it in February.
And my question is not whether you got it, but when did you, did you ask for it prior to that date?
Yeah, I don't believe so. I don't know. I don't, the answer is I don't know.
Okay. So you're not aware of it, but it's referenced in the ordinance that was in place at the time?
Yeah, without knowing more of what the, this language is saying, if we want to look at it, it looks like it's saying that according to kind of what we believe is this is a multi-step process. There's an application submittal. We went through what the application says, and then there are clearly things that are required in addition to that application for the approval. And so without knowing more, that kind of seems to lend itself to that exact same reasoning.
I'm going to move on from there to some questions. I believe you testified that in, I think the ones you used were March and April of 2022, you all retained a surveyor, an architecture firm, and a landscape architect.
Somewhere within that time period. I believe the first thing was a surveyor, and I know they were working on the survey in that time period. And I think we officially engaged our architects after kind of discussions throughout April and May. Maybe they're officially engaged, you know, early June.
Okay. So they're engaged in early June. I'm going to throw up for you here, this is the architectural design, we've referenced this before, this is from 54-249 as well. I'm going to read it. Let me know if I read it incorrectly. "The design of buildings in the Mountain Village should reflect the character of western North Carolina and should be designed and constructed to achieve the goal of creating sustainable buildings that can serve multiple uses as the village grows and changes over time. Applications and master plans, applications and master plans for Mountain Village shall be accompanied by urban and architectural design guidelines prepared by the applicant. Building materials within the Mountain Village should be quali, should be quality, sustainable materials that contribute to the long-term economic viability of Mountain Village. Vinyl and similar art, artificial materials should be avoided when possible. Architecture within the Mountain Village should reflect and enhance the natural and man-made environment found in western North Carolina." Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
Let's break it down. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions about it.
Sure.
First, it talks about architectural design guidelines to be prepared by the applicant, correct?
And design of buildings, multiple, and villages, and things of that nature.
But it does talk about architectural design-
It does talk about the design guidelines, that's right.
And your testimony was that you did not retain an architect until June of 2022, correct?
That's right, because the application has none of this information in it.
So it's not included, you didn't have an architect do it before then, it didn't exist before that time?
We had an architect engaged for, in June of 2022, yeah.
Prior to that, you didn't have it?
No, I don't believe so. Unless it's on the site plans, I think all of these were noted on the site plans, and I'm just not sure when things were noted on the site plan.
Okay. And in the building materials context, well, I'll, I'll withdraw that question, I want to head in a different direction. One of the things I'd like to ask you about, you also mentioned that you'd retained a landscape architect in March of April of 2022, correct?
That might have been a little later into the summer, after we had more design done.
Okay.
So they might have officially been working on it in July, August period, somewhere around there for the submittal.
I think we've seen this email before. This is RD 009, and I'm going to read from the beginning. This is the email from Ms. Eisenhower to your design professionals, I think Mr. Day, correct? Or Mr., or Sean, correct? I can pull it back out.
Yeah, do you mind pulling it back out, so I can see what's going on?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can see it's from Adrian, I'll trust you in all that, and that's what you're blowing up right there.
And that's in response to, it's listed after an email from Sean Sains, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's May 17th, 2021, correct?
The email from Sean is May 17th. There's, the Adrian email, I don't, is that what you're, I'm sorry.
Well, I was referring to Sean's email.
Okay, yeah, Sean's email is May 17th, 2021.
And in response to that email, Ms. Eisenhower says, "Do you have a landscaping plan?", question mark. "The ordinance requirements are as follows. Landscaping and or buffering shall be provided as part of an approved master plan. Such plan will be designed by a licensed state landscape architect and must be approved as part of the master plan." Did I read that correctly?
That's right. She's clearly letting us know we'll have to have that for our approval.
So the same day that application is initially submitted, she responds requesting additional information and identifies it as being required by the ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you didn't retain a landscape architect until June, I think you said summer perhaps, 2022?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so we had CDC, who had been talking with Ms. Eisenhower, kind of describing our natural state of landscaping plan. When you look at these requirements, if you're leaving what is a wooded lot, and it's talking about trees on both sides, and we're leaving all the trees there, we're explaining like, really do you want us to do? We don't want rose gardens up here. So when we submitted a revised plan in October, it more clearly indicated where landscape would be, and continuing to work with the city so that for our approval, we would provide these things, and we did.
But you did not have a state, you did not submit a landscape plan that was designed by a state-licensed architect within six months of being requested?
That is correct.
Okay. I also want to ask a few other questions about, I think you just mentioned the, the October submission is what you're referring to, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And that's October of?
2021.
2021, I know we're getting all of our-
Yeah, sorry if I'm answering for you, but yeah, just being helpful.
Yep. So you call that, if I've heard, heard your testimony correct, you call that a, I think you said a resubmission, or what was the word that you used?
Yeah, I might have misspoke, but it's a revised site plan. There's no new application filed, it's just a revised site plan.
Revision was the word I was searching for.
Yeah, revised site plan is, I think, what I've been using.
Okay. You're aware of letters in December of 2021 from your engineers to the town related to that application, correct?
I generally am, but I don't know what you're referring to until we go over it.
Yeah. We'll put first this up, this is from October 13th, 2021. This is from Chris Day. Let me know if I read this incorrectly. "Please confirm the materials we have submitted are sufficient to constitute an application under the Town of Woodfin zoning ordinance, in effect as of the date of your receipt of this letter." Did I read that correctly?
You did.
That would be October 13th, 2021.
2021, yes.
Not May 17th, 2021.
This is our engineer's submittal letter submitting a revised site plan to the May 17th application.
Where does it say revised site plan there?
This is a transmittal letter.
But where does it say revised site plan?
I think in what was submitted is a revised site plan with the email that's submitting it indicating as such. This is clearly an error, and I believe you'll have an opportunity to actually ask Mr. Day those questions, but it does not say that, you're correct.
It doesn't say that there.
It doesn't say that.
Throwing up an email, this is RD 036. You call out a revision in an email from Mr. Sain to Adrian, and I'll read it, let me know if I read it incorrectly. It says, "Adrian, please see attached submittal, updated materials of our original October 13th submittal for the proposed Robinhood residential project." Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, what's the date here? This is December?
December 20th.
Yeah, I believe this is in regards to us removing the November site plan, and I think this is a reference going, but we want to just go back to what we had in October, is what had been revised in October, go back to that. So I think this is imprecise language, but again, I think you're going to have an opportunity to ask these questions directly to the person who was at that firm.
Again, my question was, original?
Yeah, it says that, yes. You've read that correctly.
I'll also direct you to not just the email, but the letter from Mr. Day on December 20th, I think you can see that date there. Correct me if I read it wrong, it says, "We have updated our original October 13th submittal." Did I read that correctly?
You read that correctly.
You have both Mr. Sain saying it's an original, correct?
Uh, yes. Uh, yeah, I believe it's Mr. Sain's said that, and-
We can go back.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, but I don't know if Sean is a Mr., I just-
Ms.
Okay, that's what I was just hesitating on. I wanted to be, I, you had me confused as well, so I didn't want that to be, but yes, I think it's a Ms., but yes, your point is correct. Ms. Sain said that, yes.
Ms. Sain said, "Original." Mr. Day also calls it an original.
And again, I believe they will, are referring back to when we remove our November site plan and say we're not going to pursue a conditional use, we're going to go back to what we submitted, kind of at October. So I think they're using imprecise language here, but you will get an opportunity to ask them what they meant.
Okay. Where do they reference the May application here?
Oh, I don't know, they don't apparently in this here. But I think what they submitted very clearly is a revised site plan to the May site plan, and it's indicated as such on every single site plan. So these are transmittal letters versus what was actually submitted and reviewed and discussed with the town, which are clearly referring to May 17th and the revised site plans.
I think, let me just give me a moment while I pull it up. Yeah. I think at the end, I'm going to fast forward, change, change directions here. Fast forward at the end of your testimony with Mr. Portnoy, you'd indicated that you only ever had, or forgive me, it may have been Ms. Hoffman's question, about only having one application, and your testimony was we've only ever had one.
There's only one application, that's correct.
Okay. This is from the November 12th letter.
Yeah, and this is-
I'm going to read it here if I can.
I'm sorry.
And it says, "On October 13th, 2021, we submitted an application, October 2021 zoning submittal for a proposed residential development project, Robinhood Residential, to be built on an unaddressed parcel on Robinhood Road, Woodfin and C, PIN number, parcel zone Mountain Village. We now submit an additional application for a potential alternative option for the project." Did I read that correctly?
You did, yes.
Okay. So it wasn't that you've only ever had one, you-
No, there's only one application, John. These are transmittal letters from our civil design firm. I'm not going to, I, you will have the opportunity to ask them, but the facts are clear. There's one application filed, every revised site plan relates back to that application. These are the transmittals. I didn't write them, the witness will be here to answer for that, and you can go through it, but I will agree that what you're reading is entirely correct. You are reading it correctly.
And this is what your civil design firm was representing to the town at the time that they submitted on November 12th, 2021?
That's correct.
I think you had testified that when you received the letter from Ms. Eisenhower about your application being null and void, and that the town was proceeding through rezoning, that you got back in touch with the town.
So I did. Like, when I say got back in touch with the town, I mean that we, Hatteras Sky, started attending the meetings that civil, you know, that, that our lawyers had had. We wanted to be involved in the process, understand it.
So you're in that meeting responding to the letter you'd received from the town, correct?
We're asking questions about the letter. Where did you get this from? Yes.
And I think your response is that the town then withdrew that decision, is that correct?
They issued a new letter that's in the record, yeah.
That response, and just for clarity, wasn't just based on the conversation, you all had represented that you would take legal action against the city, in which you would request all available relief at law and inequity, including an award of its attorney's fees.
Correct, that's right, yep.
So you told the town, you don't change your mind, we're going to sue you, and we're going to ask for our attorney's fees.
It's exactly what you guys are doing here, and that's under the permanent choice law, you know that attorney's fees are mandatory on that.
My question is, that's what you-
That's what we said here, yes. We are, we would exercise our legal rights in a disagreement with the town.
I'm just going to throw up, this is again the November 2nd, 2021, letter from CDC to the town, where you all had talked about, that we just covered, but I want to call out a couple of things here. In this letter, this is the first time that y'all represent that you are going to use the property for short-term rentals, correct?
That's certainly possible. I don't know if there were oral discussions before that, because I didn't have them-
I think that's not true.
I don't know. I, it could be, and I wouldn't deny it, I just don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And you were, I think your testimony is that you were presented with a portion, Chapter 30 is I think what you said, of the ordinance in response?
I believe it is Chapter 30. If it's not, please correct me.
And that Chapter 30 would have been in the ordinance in place at the time you purchased the property?
Yes.
So you would have known about it if you'd read it?
We did read it, yes.
Okay. So regardless of whether the town pointed it out to you at a later point, it was in the ordinance?
Pointed out what exactly?
I'll, we'll draw that question, ask a better one. Regardless of whether the town pointed out that STRs are not permitted in the zoning district, you would have seen those regulations in the ordinance at the time you purchased the property, correct?
So we would have seen those regulations in the ordinance, and as I read them here today, my understanding is that they're allowed. We disagree with the city on that, even here today.
And you filed an appeal related to that?
We did file an appeal related to that, yes.
And still, if I understand your testimony correct, it's still y'all's intention to allow for that to occur going forward, assuming your appeal is successful?
I don't know that to be the case. What I can confirm for you is that until we know for certain what we intend to do with respect to the short-term rental issue, our appeal is outstanding. It could be withdrawn, we have had discussions with the city, and we're considering that, but here today, we have not made any determination like that.
And you've not informed the city that you are no longer intending to do that?
We have not informed the city officially that we will withdraw that appeal, but we have had discussions.
And I'll be a little bit clearer. You've no, you have not informed the city that you no longer intend to use the property for short-term vacation rentals?
That's correct, yeah. We have not made that determination until the city.
If I can have just a quick moment, can talk with my client?
Thank you.
Mr. Golden, do we go on to Mr. Henning next, or we go back to Mr. Portnoy for?
If Mr. Henning has any questions.
He does not have any questions for this one.
Okay. Now we go back to Mr. Portnoy for-
Mr. Portnoy, yes.
Yes.
I just have a few questions. I believe when Mr. Nor started, he pulled up 54-318 and asked you some questions about that. Did you review the Section 54-249 of the ordinance?
Um, yes. I, I mean, there's, there are several ordinances that have been floated around, and I have reviewed a lot of ordinances, so even pulling up an ordinance, I'm not even sure at the moment if I know which one it is. So if you'd help, but yes, I have reviewed these, yes.
So before you submitted the May 17th, 2021 application, did you review Section 249 of the ordinance that was in effect?
Yes, yes.
And that's titled Mountain Village District, correct?
Yeah, and it's even farther says, "The Mountain Village Residential District."
And if you read on, it says, "To permit a range of mixed high-density, single-family, and multifamily housing," correct?
Correct.
Okay. Based on that preamble alone, what was your understanding as to whether multiple buildings were allowed or not allowed in that district?
It seems like they are allowed when you read permitted uses, saying that all those are permitted uses as well.
Okay. And to your recollection, does Section 54-249 even make any reference to Section 54-318, which is the section Ms. Nor was discussing?
I don't believe it does, because it has its own conditional uses, a list of them in it. I think it's D. I don't know if that-
Yeah. So based on all that, though, was, was your understanding consistent with Ms. Eisenhower's position that multiple buildings were permitted?
Yes.
And you also talked about the time to retain an architect, and I'm jumping kind of to past February. You mentioned, I think earlier, there was a whole RFP process, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, we wanted to talk with several architects to make sure that we were hiring someone with, you know, experience in this type of design and development.
Okay, so that's not a quick process, is it?
Um, no, not in 2021.
Consult real quick.
Thank you.
So I guess there's no other questions for the witness, or are-
Mr. Nor or Mr. Henning have any follow-ups based on that?
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Well, yes.
It was, it was just on, oh, it was expanded, it's the same page. Reading in that 54-249, a little bit further down, after it talks about the different types of housing that can be within that, including single-family and multifamily housing, that it could even include some office and public civic uses in higher-density residential areas, and that it is intended that this district be located near employment centers, shopping facilities, roads, and other urban infrastructure capable of handling the demand generated by this high-density residential development, et cetera. So is the, the area that we're talking about, that prop, the property, does it meet that, that description of the, the support, in your opinion?
For what we're doing, it has the roads and infrastructure to it that we need. As part of what we've acquired for the property, a lot of the roads that you've seen that are in disrepair and never been maintained, are roads that we've acquired that are the private roads you keep hearing about. And so they kind of wander down the site pretty far. Those are the roads that we own as part of our hundred and some acres, and for what we're doing in terms of improving the roads and adding our access for the residential that we're doing, I feel comfortable with what we're doing. Now, I cannot comment at all about what Woodfin zoning, why they zone things one way or the other. As I testified, I looked at what the current zoning designation was, it's a mountain village, this is what applies. It's not my, you know, it's not within my kind of purview of- applies. It's not my, you know, it's not within my kind of purview of why it's zoned.
Mr. Nor?
I didn't have any more.
Just briefly, I want to throw this back up here. This is Section 54-318, group development, and I'm going to read from the first paragraph there. It says, it says as a conditional use, again, in the case of two more buildings to be constructed, and we've gone over that. And then after provided, it says, number one, such uses are limited to those permitted within the zoning district in which the project is located. Did I read that correctly?
You did.
So group development section here references the particular zoning districts that use would be in.
Yeah, there's a couple of clarifying comments, though. When you look at the mountain village, and you can object to my answer, because you're asking me what I read and what I knew, so I'm going to tell you what I read and I knew.
Well, my question was, it references the particular zoning district, doesn't it?
It does. So when you go look at mountain village, it has its own list of specific permitted uses and its own list of conditional uses within it. And so when you look at those conditional uses under the ordinance that applies, group development's not listed, but in future ordinances, group development got listed and then pulled back. So our understanding has been that specific, and this is me explaining what I knew, I want to be very careful here because I understand he could have objections, but if he's asking me what I understood-
I really wasn't asking what you understood so much as it references this particular zoning-
I understand that. It does do that. And I'm saying, when you go look at the zoning district, it has its own specific set of rules. When I read things, in my experience, and here, if something is not specifically listed as a conditional use within the zoning district, then it's not a conditional use in that zoning district, especially when you look at the intent of this code. When I look at the other further revisions where that's specifically being marked.
I guess I will object to the intent of the code. Now we're getting into what Woodfin intended by its code versus what he intended-
Okay, that's, that's fair. I, I won't speak anymore on that point.
My next point, we've gotten through that the particular zoning district is referenced in the group development statute. We go down to three, and I'll read there, it says, a proposed group development project should be designed by a licensed architect. Did I read that correctly?
Correct. There's, I agree wholeheartedly that all of these need to be designed by licensed architects, even houses.
You all, however, had not retained a licensed architect until June of 2022.
That's correct, because we'd never been told that group development was even something that would be contemplated. In fact, we were being told the opposite of that by the town.
But it's in the ordinance you could have read, correct?
And I'm telling you that the ordinance I read is very specific in mountain village, that group development is not a conditional use. That's our reading.
But it's there in black and white?
I don't see mountain village there. I see that it says zoning districts, and when you go look at this ordinance, it has very specific permitted uses and very specific conditional uses within that develop, within mountain village. This isn't one of them. So I'm not responsible for what's the town intending, just like I can't tell you what the town intends. If the town is telling me this doesn't apply, and I, and I file my application, which is a one-pager, and I attach the site plan being requested, I'm just not sure what else I can do if I'm asking the town for assistance and guidance on this over a period of like 19 months.
And if I'd heard you correct, you also had retained your own attorneys to advise you on this?
And our attorneys are of the same opinion we are, that this doesn't apply to mountain village. And that's what the town had told us.
Yet it's in the zoning ordinance.
I don't read that to apply to mountain village.
And I'll be, section 54-318, group development is in the zoning ordinance, correct?
It is in the zoning ordinance, and there's a specific mountain village zoning ordinance. And that's where we disagree.
Those are my follow-ups. Thank you.
Mr. Portnoy? So then we can dismiss the witness?
Unless you all have questions.
Does boards have any questions? Okay. Thank you. You are dismissed. Mr. Portnoy?
This time HS Robinhood would like to call Chris Day to the stand.
Mr. Golden, can you please swear in the witness?
Will you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you do, please say I, or if so, please say I do.
I do.
Mr. Day, can you please introduce yourself to the board?
Yes, my name is Chris Day. I'm a civil engineer at Civil Design Concepts here in Asheville.
And in 30 seconds or less, can you tell the board about your educational and professional background and what you currently do?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from NC State University, as well as a Bachelor of, Bachelor of Science in environmental engineering from NC State. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of Tennessee and North Carolina, and I have practiced site development engineering for approximately 24 years, with the last 17 plus of those being here in Asheville, Asheville, Western North Buncombe County.
In your capacity as a civil engineer and design professional, approximately how many zoning permit applications have you submitted and had approved in various jurisdictions throughout Buncombe County and Western North Carolina?
I do not know an exact number, but it would be in excess of 1,000. In fact, we were just recently putting together an RFQ for a project, and we went back for the last 10 years, and I've personally been involved with the entitlement or approval process on 3,500, over 3,500 multifamily units in the last 10 years in Buncombe County, and 350 single-family units in this area.
Okay, so of those thousands of multifamily and single-family developments, how many of those were approved or entitled without you having to revise the site plan to address comments from the governing authority?
For those projects, none that I can recall.
And how many of those thousands of multifamily and single-family applications or entitlements included multiple revisions to the site plans?
Many, half maybe? It's very, it really kind of depends on the size of the project. I've had a handful of projects that were very tiny and small that may have gone through with no comments, but the bigger the project is, the more revisions that are common.
And of the thousands you just discussed, how many of those were submitted in the city of Asheville?
I don't know an exact number, maybe half?
And did you ever work with Ms. Bernstein on any of those zoning compliance permit applications with the city of Asheville?
I did, yes.
And on those projects with Ms. Bernstein, was it typical for you to have multiple revisions to site plans?
It was typical to have revisions to site plans, yes.
And would those site plans ever be approved with conditions?
Really depends on-
Ms. Bernstein specifically talked about the process, and Asheville, in her testimony, was that she would rarely, if ever, have site plans approved with conditions. So we are directly addressing testimony that was submitted by the petitioners in this case.
I over, overrule.
Will you repeat the question?
Yeah. Were the site plans that you worked on with Ms. Bernstein, were those approved ever with conditions?
Not final permits. Final permits, you've got to have all conditions wrapped up. But the, as you move through the process, we would go through technical review, technical review committee for staff-level reviews, and those were typically moved on to the next board with an approve with conditions.
And let's turn to Woodfin specifically. Within the last few years, how many zoning compliance permit applications have you submitted in the town of Woodfin?
Not near as many. A handful. I've worked on-
What about CDC?
My company has done multiple, I don't know, dozens? I, I don't know an exact number.
And can you, can you tell the board about your experience with those zoning compliance permit applications submitted with the town of Woodfin?
So I'll say that the process of late has gotten way better with Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck coming on board. Historically, I worked on storage units in town. I worked on the new AVL Technologies Building, French Broad River Academy for the girls' school up on the river. A lot of those, historically, there were, my experience was, there was no ordinances available online, and we would simply arrange a meeting with the town manager and come and talk about the project.
Let's jump then to the zoning application in this case. Before it was submitted on May 17th, 2021, did you have any conversations with Ms. Eisenhower?
Regarding this, rephrase your question, please.
Yeah, sorry. Did you, did, my question is, before you submitted this application, did you have any conversations with Ms. Eisenhower?
Yes.
Okay. And did you ask for guidance on what needed to be submitted?
I don't recall if I asked specifically on this project, but I have another active project in Woodfin that one of my existing clients was working on. In that project, it had an, it's in mountain village zoning, and it had an existing entitlement approval in place. My client had hired me to make amendments to that, and I asked Ms. Eisenhower if there was a checklist I needed to follow for that site plan, and was told no.
Okay, so just to be clear, this is in May of 2021, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and your testimony is that in May 2021, you asked Ms. Eisenhower if there was a checklist related to mountain village residential zoning districts, correct?
For mountain, mountain village zoning district, yes.
And Ms. Eisenhower's response again was what?
Not at that time.
So if there wasn't any set guidelines or checklist, what did you use in this case for this project to prepare the May 17th, 2021, application and site plan?
For the most part, we just used kind of our, our standard, what we would submit for a conceptual site plan at this stage in the game, whether we were in this municipality or the city of Asheville, or Buncombe County, or other, other municipalities. In addition, we, I had the entitled plan in mountain village and used that as kind of a go-by to, to look at, to see the, the level and depth of the plans.
And just again, to clarify, the, the go-by you used, that was also zoned mountain village residential district, correct?
It was, yes. Can I ask, you use the term mountain village residential? Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with just mountain village. I think it's all the same one. I don't, I'm, I guess, asking the town, I don't know that there's a differential between mountain village, mountain village. I've heard mountain village used and mountain village residential. I just know it is the same, the same zoning.
Yeah, and I, I'm saying mountain village residential district. I think that's a formal phrase in the actual ordinance, but you're correct, throughout this case, we've been talking just mountain village interchangeable.
Okay.
So just to be clear, the site plan that you submitted on May 17th, 2021, for HS Robinhood, was based on a previously approved site plan for a different project, but that was also zoned mountain village, correct?
That and the typical that I would submit for conceptual entitlement.
At any point during your conversations with Ms. Eisenhower in May of 2021, did she say that HS Robinhood needed to provide approvals for proposed sanitary sewer and water distribution systems with the zoning compliance permit application?
No, I, I would remember that.
And based on the other submittals you did in Woodfin, were you required to provide that just at the time of zoning compliance permit application?
Not that I recall. Some municipalities, that's a requirement at the front end, and sometimes it depends on the project.
So let's just take a step back and want to talk about, before we get further into the actual application and the site plan, want to talk about what went on kind of behind the scenes. Can you tell the board, explain to the board what CDC and you, you did before May 17th, 2021, to prepare the site plan?
So my engagement on this project started in January of 2021. I had a Zoom meeting with a representative of the, of the client, and then in late January, I did a site visit of the property. We then moved forward over the next couple of months with, with conversations on programming and, and what the client was looking for on the property. And then we had a, I had a site visit with the client onsite, walking the property in April, as we then prepared and made an initial submittal in May of 2021.
And so back to the submittal in May 2021, if we could pull up RD 003?
I don't have the notebook.
Thank you.
Where do I need to go to?
RD 003. And I'm just want to draw your attention to the part that says plot plan.
I see it.
And it says, attach site plan or draw plan accurately into scale, show dimensions of lot and located structures by dimensions from property line. Did I read that correctly?
You did read that correctly.
Okay, and there was a site plan attached, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and did the site plan draw the plan accurately into scale?
Yes, it did.
Okay, and does it show the dimensions of lot and located structures by dimensions from the property line?
It shows, it shows the units in relation to the property line, but there's a lot of structures on there, so they don't individually all have distances labeled. You would use the master scale to determine that.
So it's accessible through the master scale, correct?
It is.
Okay, and what would happen if you did, I guess, address each structure on the site plan individually?
Part of my job as a design professional in submitting plans is to make plans that are legible and, and able to be read. And if every structure on this site plan had a dimension to the property line callout, it would get difficult to, to follow. So we, we, we utilize the drawing the plan to scale, issuing out the scale, and publishing it, and then keeping a reference in case that it's been reduced or enlarged, so that we have a reference scale on there.
Was that the same method that you did with other site plans in Woodfin?
Same in Woodfin, as well as basically every other jurisdiction that we submit to.
With the thousands of others you submitted?
Yes, they would all have that, that scale on there.
All right. After you submitted the site plan, you received an email from Adrian Eisenhower with a list of six questions, correct?
Yes.
And that is at, if we turn to actually RD 018 to 019?
I'm there.
I want to kind of walk through those questions with you. If we start with her first question, she says, we need clarification on the type of building you are proposing. Will these be townhomes, apartments, cottages, et cetera? Did the, did you address that comment from Ms. Eisenhower at any time?
Our October 13th, where we made a recent middle of the site plans, addressed that by actually color coding the units to help clarify what was a multifamily building, what was a triplex, what was a single-family home.
Okay, and can, just for boards reference, can you reference in the, what RD number?
I'm looking at RD 015.
So is it your position that the October 2021 revised site plan addressed question number one in the email from Ms. Eisenhower?
My plan is actually-
I can rephrase it.
Okay. Sustained, and please rephrase.
Was your intent in providing the October 2021 revised site plan to address the first question from Ms. Eisenhower? question from Ms. Eisenhower?
The reason that I provided the clarification and the color coding and additional labels on this October submittal was to, uh, address and speak to Ms. Eisenhower's question number one.
Okay, so that's question one. The item number two in her email says, "The ordinance was recently updated to allow for eight units per acre, but it has not been updated in municode. You meet the density requirements, but will need to change the permitted density listed on the site plan." Did you address that comment from Ms. Eisenhower?
So I changed my development data box, which is found on the right side of the site plan submitted, and I updated that with the permitted density reference of eight units an acre per the email.
All right, moving on to the third item in her email. "Can you provide some more information on parking?" And then she asked about the parking. Did you address that item in your October 13th, 2021 revised site plan?
So my, um, revised site plan in October identified and pointed to the parking and then clarified, um, in places such as the duplex building and referenced that it had garage parking. It was my intent to address her question, those clarifications on the October plan.
Okay, well, let's move on to item four, which is his landscaping plan. Did you address that question in the October 2021 revised site plan?
So this revised site plan in October added, um, basically that's if, on RD 009, there's eight lines of, of information from the ordinance, and we've provided on this plan, the street trees, the street frontages, trees that were addressed or were referenced. We addressed the landscape buffer and labeled that on the plans. We also added the, um, parking area landscaping, and then went on to reference in general that, um, our request that this master plan, um, be approved with the condition that the, that with the general note, that the landscape and buffering would be provided in accordance with Woodfin's ordinance and, and stated that specifically, and then also referenced that, um, 75% of the, uh, landscape and buffer requirements would be native species.
After you provided that information, did Ms. Eisenhower ever reach out and say, "We still need a landscape compliance plan at this time"?
No.
Uh, moving on to item number five, it talks about, uh, the open space. Did the October 2021 revised site plan address that comment?
Our revised site plan in October addressed, um, Ms. Eisenhower's question number five by clarifying that the proposed open space was to remain in a natural state unless otherwise noted, and I've added that label to the, to the site plan.
Okay, and after you provided that, did Ms. Eisenhower say she needed more information as to the open space?
She did not.
Uh, and actually, same, same question with respect to items one and two. Uh, did Ms. Eisenhower ever say she needed information, more information after receiving the October 2021 revised site plan with respect to items one and two in her email?
No.
And with respect to item number three, did she ask for more information on parking after you, uh, provided the October 2021 revised site plan?
No.
Her final question was, "Are you planning for this to be heard by the planning board in June, correct?"
Yes, that is her question.
Okay, and I believe you actually responded, uh, if we turn to RD 008?
I did.
And your response was, "Please do not put this on the agenda until we can get back with you," correct?
Correct.
What was the purpose of, uh, writing that email?
This was on May 17th, and she had asked for many things that we needed to revise the plans for, and she was asking if we wanted to be on the planning board meeting the very next month, and so without even reaching out to my clients, I said, "No, let, put that one on hold," and, or not put it on hold, I said, "Please do not put it on the agenda until we can get back with you."
Yeah, and you're kind of hitting on, were you actually asking the town to place the application on hold?
No, I just did not want to be on the next agenda for the planning board.
Did HS Robinhood owner LLC ever authorize you to place the application on hold?
No.
Did you, uh, and it sounds like you did, but you continued to actually work on the site plan after Ms. Eisenhower sent the May 2021 email, correct?
We did, in fact, that was where the changes came about, um, in the October submittal.
Okay, and I want to turn now to, um, RD 012. Do you recognize that as your cover letter with the October 2020, October 2021 revised site plan?
I do.
And, uh, the petitioners in this case are pointing to your use of the word "application", as you, I think, just heard. What was your intent in submitting the revised site plan on October 13th, 2021?
I'll object to this on the fact that the letter speaks for itself, the language is in it. So I don't think that the best evidence would be someone over a year later testifying about what is in the documents submitted here.
He literally just asked Mr. Corden, who didn't write the letter, what the intent of that letter was, and now he's saying the person who actually wrote it can't speak to it. That makes no sense to me.
I agree.
I think my questions were about what the actual words were in that letter, not what the intent behind it was. What does that say?
We want to hear the answer. Okay, let's, overruled, and let's, we want to hear the answer.
What was your intent in submitting the October 2021 revised site?
The October submittal was in response to the comments we got, as well as the programming changes from my client. It was not my intent that, I did not submit a actual physical application, which I submitted on May 17th, which is the one-page form. It was just the revised plans, so.
So why did-
Obviously, as I've watched these proceedings, I've used the wrong words and terminology here, but I was making a submittal to address the, I was revising the first set of plans.
And does the October 2021 revised site plan refer back to the May 2021?
It does. For all of our projects, we keep a running list of revisions that occur on the project, and sometimes it can get quite out of hand, but we only show the, the first or the most current six revisions. So my October submittal actually shows the initial submittal, um, which was the dated, which, at least the plan date was May 14th of 2021, and then the plan date of the revision in the revision block was October 13th, 2021. And that's got a, kind of a small description note, as well as the, uh, the drafts person in my office who helped prepare the plans.
And I want to jump back to, uh, one of the positions that the petitioners have taken in this case is that the May 2021 site plan was insufficient because it did not have specifically list the dimensions on the site plan. Did Ms. Eisenhower ever reach out and say, "Hey, we need the dimensions"?
Not that I recall.
Same with the October 2021 revised site plan. Did Ms. Eisenhower or anyone from the town say, "Hey, you didn't provide us with the dimensions"?
No.
Okay, and why, is, were the dimensions available and accessible?
Similar to the May plans, the October plans also provide, were drawn to scale and provided a graphic scale for reference.
Okay, um, and did Ms. Eisenhower ever tell you that the May 2021 site plan was missing architectural design guidelines?
No, just, I got the, the one email that we just went through, and I don't recall any conversations about it missing that.
Looking back at the, uh, May 2021 revised site plan, though, does that include any architectural design guidelines that were referenced in the Mountain Village ordinance?
So I included, um, building notes that I took directly from a code that Ms. Eisenhower sent to me. I do not know if it was a work in progress code or an old code or the current code, but, um, she had emailed me, even as she mentioned in the other email, that RD, what is that, eight? She'd even made reference on number two that there had been recent ordinance changes and they hadn't been updated in municode. That was kind of my experience with Woodfin, that it was hard to know what to, um, depend on in regards to the, the, the directions, and so she had sent me an email that included some Mountain Vision, Mountain Village, um, requirements. In that was the language that I added to my plans, that referenced, "Front porches should be located on single-family and small-scale multifamily residential structures. Pitched roofs or single-family residential structures should have a minimum of," I can't read my writing here, but basically about the pitch, and we added a few building notes here, um, to speak towards that aspect.
Okay, was Ms. Eisenhower saying, though, that all that information was required for purposes of submitting a zoning compliance permit application?
No.
Okay, so why were you including it?
I was trying to provide as much information as I understood may or may not be required. As I said, the, um, rules were not clearly defined, and so we were, um, putting enough information here to convey our intent that this was a project that could be, that could be, um, provided a permit as we got into the details.
And, uh, another position that petitioners are taking is that sewer permits and, uh, water supply approvals were necessary at the time of submission of a zoning compliance permit application. Did Ms. Eisenhower ever say you needed that information at the time of submitting a zoning compliance permit application?
No.
All right, so we have the October 2021 revised site plan, um, that you just testified was submitted to address Ms. Eisenhower's May 2021 questions. And then I think the next thing in the record is actually, um, it's RD 022 to RD 026, and that's in November 2021, what's called an alternative site plan, um, that includes a proposed lodge and spa facility. Can you, and Mr. Corden's been on this a little bit, but can you also explain what your understanding was as to why this revised site plan was submitted?
All right, so-
To add to my objection, uh, to say, well, I didn't refer to the last letter, I'm having a sneeze or something.
I'm just-
But this is renewing a corporate record, since your chair is already over.
Okay, again, overruled, but we understand.
And to be clear, I have not asked about the letter yet, I was just asking what the purpose of submitting the revised site plan was. We will get to the letter, though, but, um, what was your understanding based on conversations with HS Robinhood as to why this revised site plan was being submitted?
So I was taking direction from my client and their, um, well, from my client and their legal, as I understood their, their legal team working on the idea that a spa and, um, lodge facility that we needed to reference that on the site plan. My October submittal did not reference those items, so I was instructed to add that onto the site plan, and so I submitted this in November stating, um, that I had just recently made a submittal in October, and that now I was, um, at the direction of my client asking to clarify, actually asking to add the potential alternative option of a spa facility to the plans.
And was this revised site plan supposed to be a new zoning compliance permit application?
No, it was a revision to the October submittal, and so my plans that I submitted that accompanied this cover letter included the third revision block and was dated, the plans were dated maybe 11, 12, 21.
And just to-
And we, we actually called, the description was alternative zoning amendment.
Okay, and was there a zoning compliance permit application submitted with this site plan?
No, just the one in May.
Okay, now we can turn to the letter, which I believe is RD 023. And again, they are, uh, addressing the fact that you call it an application, and we've hit on this, but what was the reason for using that word? What was the intent in this case?
Overruled, understood. Please continue.
So my intention with this submittal was at my client's direction to add a spa facility to the site plan that we had submitted just a month earlier. It was not to make a new submittal.
And what was the response from the town to the November 12th, 2021 alternative, or revised site plan?
I believe I've got a email in here somewhere about that. But basically, there was an email correspondence to our office stating that adding this spa would require us to go to a conditional use permit before the Board of Adjustment or zoning Board of Adjustment, I'm not sure what the, what it's called, but, um, a conditional use or special use permit.
And was this the first time that the town had told you that there was a need for a conditional use permit?
Yes.
So just to confirm, did Ms. Eisenhower or anyone from the town ever tell you that the May 2021 site plan contained a, contained a conditional use? Okay, did Ms. Eisenhower ever tell you that the October 2021 revised site plan contained a conditional use? So after learning that the November 2021 site plan with the lodge and spa would require a conditional use permit, what happened next?
I notified my clients that the town had let us know that.
And after you notified your clients, what were your instructions?
To rescind the November submittal and remove the reference to the spa and lodge.
Okay, and how do you accomplish that?
I did that with a, a submittal in, in December. Let's see, um, I submitted in December and said, in reference that I had made a submittal in November with a, um, potential alternative option and, um, had, was asking to, to rescind that, um, based upon my client's direction to remove the lodge and spa facility.
And are you referring to RD 02A, the letter in the record?
I am, yes.
Okay, and in that letter, uh, you refer to the October 13th, 2021 date, correct?
Right, so we made the initial, and the initial submittal in May. We made a revision in October. We then submitted an amendment in November to ask for a spa or lodge, and then with, in December, we went back to the October and said, you know, "Hey, we're actually pulling that November, so this is, this is, um, we're removing that and, and making that revision."
So-
In my mind, I was going basically back to that October submittal.
And same, similar questions. Was the December 2021 revised site plan supposed to serve as a new zoning compliance permit application?
No, it was a continued revision, but I'd have to study it. It, it should be pretty similar to the one we had in October, but it was, it was, we, once again, because we were tracking all the changes and the process of the initial submittal, we made a new, um, revision date on our revision block on the right side of the, each plan sheet.
And does that revision block refer to the May, uh, site plan, May 2021 site plan?
It does, it includes it as the, the first submittal.
And what was the purpose for including the May 2021 site plan in the revision block there?
So that we could track all the changes from the initial submittal.
After you submitted the December 2021 site plan, uh, did Ms. Eisenhower tell you that that site plan required a conditional use permit?
I do not recall.
If we turn to, uh, RD 034?
Thank you.
That, uh, if you read that, refresh your memory.
So, yes, we had correspondence that when we made the December submittal, um, Ms. Eisenhower, uh, referenced the fact that removal of the lodge and spa, by removing it, um, well, the way I read her correspondence to my office was that it changed, removal of the lodge and spa changed the approval. changed the approval. She then said that if we kept it, it would have been a special use permit and a quasi-judicial hearing before a BOA, ZBA, this board. She then went on to state that, that this would follow the same process as a subdivision and require review by the Planning Board and Board of Commissioners, which was also news to us, and so we forwarded this to our client to let them know.
Okay, and you forwarded, and you heard Mr. Corden testify about that process that followed, correct?
Correct.
Were you involved in that process?
Not really. I've just, at that point, the, all the conversations with the town were being handled by my client and their legal representation.
Okay, so I want to then, because of that, fast forward to August 8, 2022, and the revised site plan behind, it's TAB 20, the whole package is RD 080 to 106. And my question is just very general, did CDC assist with preparing this revised site plan?
We did.
Okay, and was this revised site plan supposed to serve as a new zoning compliance permit application?
No, my site plan, I included it as a revised site plan and listed out the date in the revision block with all previous revisions and the initial submittal referenced on each site plan sheet.
And just to be clear, does this site plan refer to the May 2021 site plan?
It does. It references that date on each, on each of my plan sheets.
So what was your understanding, though, as to the purpose of submitting this August 8, 2022 revised site?
Repeat the question?
What was your understanding as to the purpose for submitting this August 8, 2022 revised site plan?
So, my understanding was that through conversations, my client directed me to take the plans further. We had, this submittal actually included a detailed topographic and tree survey that was conducted. We then refined our site plan with architectural buildings as opposed to more generic conceptual placeholders that we had had in earlier submittals. We revised the plans with, with more detail provided by my client and his other design professionals. And the goal was to provide a, at that point, the, my client and their legal representation provided me with a checklist for the Mountain Village zoning, and so we went through that checklist to create plans that were more detailed, so they would have, it would be easier to approve, less, less conditions associated with it.
And just to make sure we're talking about the same thing, is that checklist, the checklist that's at RD 054 to RD 055?
054 to 055, yes.
And just again, to make sure I understand your testimony correctly, you asked Ms. Eisenhower in May of 2021 whether there was a checklist, correct?
I did, it was, I was not directly talking about this project, but I was talking about a project in Mountain Village.
And her statement to you was?
Not at that time.
All right, and then let's jump now to the October 18, 2022 revised plan at TAB 24. It's, the whole thing is RD 130 to 40. Again, just general question, did CDC assist with preparing the site plan submitted with this package of materials?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Was this site plan intended to be a new zoning compliance permit application?
No, once again, this was revision number six, revised site plan, and it was dated on the plan sheets as October 14, 2022. And it's in the line of all, all six revisions, all the way back up to the initial May 14, 2021 plan date.
So was it your intent for this all to relate back to the May 2021 site plan and zoning permit application?
Application, yes, correct, to the, it was a revision to the plans under the application that was initially submitted. We didn't, we never submitted any other application.
And looking at the site plan, there's the number one, like the actual number one located on the structure highlighted in yellow, what's that indicate?
So here it's indicating that, it's identifying the building. It seems a little out of context on this plan, on the August submittal, you'll see that every structure, we had multiple structures on the previous submittal, and they all had their own individual circled number to identify them with. Here, we only had one identified building.
Let me take a minute, just to talk to my clients and see if there's some other items in...
Can I ask him a question?
Yes.
Oh geez, sorry. So when did you actually get the checklist? What date was that, more or less?
I don't know. It was before we made the, I did not include it with the December submittal, but I did with the August, and so it was provided from my clients and their legal representation. I do not know the...
In 2022?
Two, right.
Okay.
Mr. Portnoy's going to take, can we take a five-minute recess? You can, you want to talk, right?
Yes.
Okay, so can we take a five-minute recess? Five minutes.
Hot mics.
Hot mics.
Right.
What's your name? I never asked you. Lisa?
It just depends, everybody, every place is different.
You said 25 minutes.
Trying to keep us on time.
Do you use that just as a water bottle, or do you have a carbonated tube?
I have the ability.
Right. They're good sturdy water bottles.
They are.
Yeah, and Mr. Portnoy meaning to...
They're fairly disruptive if I carbonate them. I'll just blend stuff. No, that is terrible.
Actually, like, just dry ice, which is the carbonation, and put it into the canisters, but it's, so I haven't, I haven't attempted to do it.
Probably shouldn't.
It's only like, what, $10 or $12 to refill it, and I'm like, I can do it for two, if I can just put dry ice in here, and, but you have to like, super weigh it out, because that's all it is, is dry ice, it's like frozen carbon dioxide, so you can weigh it and put it into that canister that goes in the back of the machine.
But a little too much.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden it blows up on you, so it's not...
Okay. Repeating back to order, Mr. Portnoy, the witness is up to you.
I have just one, just clarification, I just want to make sure. When you asked Ms. Eisenhower not to put the application on the June agenda in 2021, again, was it your testimony that the purpose was to allow you to address her comments and do further work on the site plan?
It was to have time to address the comments, and frankly, it was just kind of soon. It was, very often we make submittals, and it takes six, eight, maybe up to three months before we're in front of a, a public board, and so we were, I was needing, I didn't need to go that fast.
And this is not your only application you're working on at the time, correct?
Correct, and we're blessed with a lot of work right now, and even through this whole time period, we're very busy, yes.
That's all I have right now.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Good evening, Mr. Day. We know each other, worked on projects before, correct?
Yes.
I am going to try and ask some, again, clarifying questions to better understand the testimony that you've already given. One of the things I want to start with is, as I think, and I typed it in as you were saying it, you were talking about dimensions and the requirements there. I think you had said if every structure had a dimensions call out, it would have been difficult to follow. Do you recall giving that testimony?
I did, I did say something to that effect.
Okay, and I think you were then asked, do you use that same method for the other site plans you prepare? And your answer was correct.
I did say that.
Okay. I want to, if I'm recalling correctly, this was in the context of why dimensions aren't listed on the May plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay. One of the things I want, we talked about the, I'll throw up here the, this is, I represent to you, this is RD 105. You're familiar, this is the August application site plans that were attached to that, correct?
I do, yes.
And in that, you specifically identified dimensions, don't you?
I do, yes.
So you included them in the August 2022 application, correct? Site, this design plan, correct?
This plan references the dimensions of those buildings, yes.
You did not list what you identify as dimensions in any of the previous site plans, do you?
I did not.
Okay, so you could have included them, but you didn't?
I did not. Could you go back to the wide angle of this? I also want to point out that your device is making this look worse than it normally does, these boxes that are showing up all around my, my boxes, that, that was not reflective on my plans, but it kind of speaks to how I try to keep my plans clean and legible, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure why it's presenting this way on the screen, but that's not what the plans look like that I submitted in that regard.
This is RD again at the bottom here.
RD 105.
RD 105, so that's in the record.
Correct, and I'll say that my RD 105 looks different than what you have presented on the screen.
Well, to clarify that, do the dimensions look any different?
They don't have all the boxes around everything, but the dimensions are labeled on there.
Okay, so no discrepancy between the dimensions, other than, as I think you just said, the boxes around them, correct? Okay.
Sorry, I'm particular about how my plans look.
Want to ask, kind of head in a different direction as well. One of the things I'd like to put up is, we've talked about this, but Ms. Eisenhower's letter, email I should say, I've thrown that up here, that's RD 009. And I'm not going to quote it again, we've already talked about it, but this is where she's saying the ordinance requires a landscape plan that's designed by a licensed state landscape architect, correct?
Yes.
You are not a licensed landscape architect. I didn't hear you list that as part of your credentials, is that correct?
I did not.
And you are not one?
I am not a landscape, I'm not a licensed landscape architect.
Okay. I also, and I didn't hear you list, you're not an architect, licensed architect.
I'm not a licensed architect, only a professional engineer.
Okay. So when you were testifying that the October plan included, I think you mentioned tree depictions and buffers, that was work you did, correct?
It was work that my office did with my oversight, and that is common for me to do as a design professional, to show that compliance is achievable when we bring in the detailed plans.
But that wasn't done by a licensed landscape architect? That was done by someone in your office, I think is what you just testified?
Someone in my office.
Okay. Also with the architecture part of this, I think you'd mentioned that you added, and I'll throw it up there, if that'd be helpful for you to see the October submission, you mentioned that you added building notes?
Yes.
And I think you testified, you heard Mr. Corbin's testimony, that they had not retained an architect until the summer of 2022, correct?
I'm not exactly sure when they retained the architect, but I wasn't listening to all the details of that part of it.
Fair enough. As of this time, though, the, any of those building notes that you included, or your office included in that site plan, hadn't been designed by an architect, correct?
No, I put these notes on the plan.
Just you, okay.
I pulled these notes from some verbiage that I got from the town. I pulled these notes from some verbiage that I got from the town in the Mountain Village or a potential Mountain Village ordinance.
Okay.
You referenced the October submittal, but I, but I also had those building notes on the initial Mesa middle.
But again, not designed by an architect?
No, 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 they were, they were from language that I was provided and I instructed my staff to include them on.
Essentially verbatim citation from the ordinance that's dumped into the site plan.
Verbatim from, um,
The ordinance.
From information that I got.
Okay, from the town. Want to talk a little bit about this letter. This is your letter dated October 13th, 2021, correct?
That is.
And that is RD 12.
Okay. Yes.
Again, these are your words that you signed under, correct?
They are.
Okay. And you indicate that, please confirm the materials have been submitted are sufficient to constitute an application. Did I read that correct?
You did read that correct.
And you asked that it be an application under the town of Woodfin zoning ordinance in effect as of the date of your receipt of this letter. Did I read that correct?
That is what my, that is what the letter says.
That is what you represented to the town on behalf of your client.
That is what the letter says.
I want to cover a few other things. Um, this is RD 36. This is from Sean, Ms. Sains. She, this is the December 20th email that we've talked about previously. Here she is representing, not just you, but she is also representing this as an original October 13th submittal. Did I read that correctly?
You read it correctly, but this, um, as I see above it, is from the December 21st correspondence, so.
Forgive me if I said the 20 of them.
It's, it's from the December or whatever, but it's from the December submittal. And so it's referring to the fact that, that we had removed the November potential submittal and gone back to the October.
Okay. And it's December 20th, I think is the date up there.
Okay.
Okay. And she's, again, calling it the original October 13th submittal.
That is what the words are, yes.
That same day or, yeah, that same day, you also referenced it separate apart from Ms. Sains as the original October 13th submittal, correct?
Yes, I'm referring to the submittal before the November. The previous submittal that I had given to her was in November, and so I'm referring to the original one because my December plans are the same as my October plans.
Where in this letter do you reference the May application?
I don't.
Does Ms. Sains, Ms. Sains, I'll rephrase. Ms. Sains doesn't reference the May application either, does she?
Not that I'm aware of.
I believe you talked about the checklist. Um, do you recall that testimony that you, I think you received it somewhere, you couldn't recall exactly, but it was somewhere between December and August of 2022 and that you had received it from your client and counsel?
Yes, their, their counsel.
Their counsel?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know the date that I received it.
And I'm not going to try to have you lock in a date, um, but my question is, is you're aware that that checklist is referenced in the ordinance that was in effect as of May 17th, correct?
I was not aware of that until I heard you bring it up earlier tonight.
But you see that as of today, that it was referenced in the ordinance? I can pull that back up if it'd be helpful for you.
I don't know. I will be honest with you, as I made reference earlier, um, my experience in Woodfin, it was, it's always been kind of the Wild West and so as we, and there were ordinances that weren't available or the ones that were available didn't apply and you couldn't even get a zoning map or know what the zoning of a property was for many years. And so on this project, I have depended heavily on my client and their legal counsel to give me direction as to what was applicable associated with my plans.
And I'm just throwing that up there for you, 54-249, where it says the master plan shall provide all information indicated on the town's master plan checklist. Did I read that correct?
You did read that correct.
And when did you ask for the checklist?
I asked for the checklist for a, um, project in the Mountain Village zoning in May of 2021.
And I believe your testimony was that was not this project, correct?
This project. It was, it was a different project in Woodfin and the Mountain Village.
On a different piece of property?
Different piece of property.
That was a different development being proposed?
It was a different existing approval and I was looking to make amendments to the approved plan and so I asked for a checklist and was told there was not one available.
But I'm hearing you correct. You denied for a checklist related to this project?
I did, not that I recall. Is this in the RD that I can see it more?
It will actually be in one of those binders in front of you and I'm happy if I may approach, Mr. Chairman.
It's, I was.
I was going to move in a different direction. It's fine. Wanted to ask a little bit, just about a couple of final questions. The November, this is from November 12th, 2021. This is your letter to the town, correct? This is at RD 23, if you need to.
Yes, that is my letter.
Okay. And I just want to be clear here. In that letter, you say, we now submit an additional application. Did I read that correctly?
You're in, no, sorry, I went to RD 28. Pardon me for a second. Correct, that's what I say.
And then you say, please consider this in addition to, not in place of, the October 2021 zoning submittal. Did I read that correctly?
That is, that's correct. I had just made the October submittal the previous month.
This wasn't a revision of the October plan. This was a new application. Correct?
No, this was not intended to be a new application. It was a, it was a modification.
Says additional application.
So I'll step back, I'll step back and say, context wise, I mentioned earlier that I went to NC State. I took classes where I didn't have to write papers, didn't have to write letters, and didn't have to public speak, and I ended up with two engineering degrees. Now all I do is write papers and get up and have to talk and I will tell you that my language here, um, I'm, I'm not an attorney and my language here, obviously you guys have found fault with it. I made a submittal. My client asked me to include a lodge and spa facility and so that was the direction that I was given here and that I was making when I made this submittal to the town.
That's your testimony, excuse me, that's your testimony as of today, though, not what you said on November 12th, 2021, though, correct?
Those are the words in my letter on November 12th, 2021.
Okay, I have just a second to check with my client. Those are going to be my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Portnoy?
I just have one quick follow-up question. Mr. Day, I just want to go back to your conversation with Ms. Eisenhower in May 2021 and, uh, I understand you were talking about a different property, but that property was zoned Mountain Village, correct?
It was. In fact, I had email correspondence with her about that project and then I actually met face to face with her on a different project that never came to fruition for me that was also zoned Mountain Village, um, zoning in Woodfin.
So when you asked her for a checklist, were you asking her generally for any checklist that applied to Mountain Village zoning districts?
I was asking for a zoning checklist for really for, not necessarily, honestly, it wasn't even for just, this was a Mountain Village, so I was, my intent was to use it for this one, but I wasn't asking for a Mountain Village specific. Typically, I'm used to seeing checklists that are for just a zoning submittal in general. And so whether it was zoned Mountain Village or anything else, my request for the checklist was to give guidance on what the town needed. Um, the reason that I used the go-by, um, the example project was because it was also zoned in the Mountain Village.
And that one had been approved, correct? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Nor, I'm supposed to ask, Mr. Sains, okay. Um, does the board have any questions for us? No, seeing no questions, you are dismissed. Thank you. Now, go ahead. Mr. Nor?
I was going to suggest that we let you leave 15 minutes early this evening.
Well, we can't go yet. We can't go yet because.
I know, we have to talk about next.
Future dates, yes.
I actually, before, we have a witness that has been waiting for the past six days. He's testified remotely. My questioning should be five to 10 minutes, um, on this one, since this is a huge issue. He's been standing by, um, and so I think we could get done by nine, um, so they could pretty all.
Pull the board. Do you think we can make it till nine?
Who is the witness?
Let's do it.
Okay.
If Mr. Nor wants to be able to cross-examine, would the witness be able to come back?
All right. So, yes, Mr. Portnoy, that's the good question we'll say. So if the witness is standing by for you, um, if we, if you take us till nine o'clock, will he be able to be available for cross-reference at the, correct word? Cross-examination by Mr. Nor at the next meeting?
Uh, I guess we would have to figure out the date that it is to confirm.
We are going to have to talk to that very, right soon as you're done, if we let you proceed. We need to get a date before we leave tonight. So would you rather wait and do it all? Okay, because we are getting close and we've been very good as far as being, going over quite a bit.
Appreciate of that. I'm just trying to see, because that will take time off and one last person later down the road, so.
So let's hold him, hold him, her, this next witness to the next time?
Okay.
All right. Um, now, before everybody leaves, hang on, we're still in the meeting. We have not adjourned. Um, we need to come up with a possible next date because I believe we have run out of dates. So, Mr. Golden, would you like to take control of that?
Absolutely not. There is, there is. No chance I can take control of anybody's calendar, um.
I have calendars.
To, to say when we can do it again. I think what the idea would be, um, to allow, John and John and Josh, Mr. Portnoy, Mr. Henning and Mr. Nor to kind of look at their calendars. We need to cross that with when city councils going to meet, uh, and then we can look at our availability for those specific dates.
Maybe it'd be helpful if we knew how many days were being requested that we can identify.
I have, no, yeah, I mean, that's, again, that's going to be up to you all. I don't know how many more witnesses Mr. Portnoy has, how long your cross is going to take. I mean, if we, it's.
Right now, we have three more witnesses. I think those can all be done in a day. We do have a closing, though, that we would do that, like Mr. Nor's closing would probably be an hour or so. So that would probably extend to the second day. The question then is, does Mr. Nor have any rebuttal evidence he would have to present? Uh, in my understanding, that is limited to rebuttal evidence.
So can we pick two days for now?
Yeah.
And if we, after getting into the second day, we'll know whether we're going to need more, I would hope, by then. So let's pick two more days.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm happy to look at the board's calendar first or, or let the attorneys look at their calendars first, but we always have to consider counsel and the days that they have. So, I mean, those days are going to be out. Shannon, do you know what days they're going to meet in the coming weeks?
Uh, council just met yesterday.
Yeah, they just met.
So we're good for about a month.
Okay.
Planning board would be, um,
Can tell you, cannot be tomorrow night. I could, we can say that for sure, because we have another reading back here tomorrow night.
I just want to throw out there for, for me personally, in the last couple of weeks that we've met, Wednesday's work, um, throw that out there. So the first, and I can do the second. I think the second could work. I have a parent teacher conference scheduled for Wednesday and the third, and I think I would.
I'm sorry, Wednesday's the first?
Wednesday, I should, Wednesday the first.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just, I, I just don't think there's, I really wouldn't be able to possibly.
Uh, and I would be out from March 1st, and if we were looking at the second, I'm out on March 2nd. I've got two evening meetings on those days.
Eighth and ninth?
I think it'd be eighth, it'd be 28th or eighth.
Eighth, eighth be Wednesday and Thursday, did March 8th and 9th?
I mean, nobody wants.
What's the third like?
I can't make a third. That's a Friday night.
We've done that already.
I know, I know.
How about the 28th?
Yeah, so, so let's make sure the 27th or 28th isn't available.
Of February?
Yes, 27th and 28th of February.
I can't do the 28th.
And you can't do the 28th. All right, so 27th, 28th are out.
Well, we don't have to have back-to-back days.
No, no, we're just looking at any days.
So does anybody, so is 27th out for everybody or someone?
At least one.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. So 27th, no, 28th, no. So that takes us into March. So am I correct? We cannot fit it into February? Okay. March 1st is not available. March 2nd is not available. March 3rd is not available. Takes us to, I cannot make the 6th. Um, as soon as we could do it would be the 7th, but we have someone who cannot make the 7th. I've already got.
Planning board is the 7th.
Okay. 8th? Is there anyone not available on the 8th?
That's the Carson Green line, Shannon. Is that okay for you?
Yeah, yeah. Don't worry about that.
All right, so let's go. So Mr. Henning, can you make the 8th? Okay, Mr. Nor, can you make the 8th?
I do want to say I have jury duty that day, so if any of my colleagues here have that trial, just make sure I'm out in time to be there.
Just say you can't be fair and impartial. I just can't be fair and impartial.
Mr. Portnoy and gang, how do we do on the 8th?
The, the 8th? If we can coordinate, maybe if not all of us can make it, well, at least I'll be here, um, I think Mr. Portnoy can be here as the key. I guess there is making sure,
Your witnesses?
The witness is there.
Okay.
And I can give them a call right now, just step out.
We can also do what we did with Mr. Terrell, that we can set it for the 8th, subject to that.
Yeah, what I'm going to do is that.
Mr. Golden, are you good for the 8th?
I, I am good for the 8th.
Everybody on the board?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can say that we're going to resume on the 8th at this point. At 5:00 PM. Now, uh, next day would be the 9th. Do we have any prob, we have any objections to the 9th? I can use that word now.
It's a Thursday?
Uh, Mr., it's a Thursday, yes. Mr. Henning?
That works, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Nor?
I believe that works for it.
Okay. And I understand if there's something comes up, we're going to have to kind of work around it, but, uh, Mr. Portnoy and gang?
I think we're good on the 9th.
The board? Mr. Golden?
Yeah, the 9th.
Let's shoot for the 8th and 9th from 5 till 9.
My wife can do the parent meeting. It's, it's, uh,
Putting out my.
You can take one of the two of us.
You sure?
Yeah.
Now's the time?
Yeah, now's the time. We were going to make the concession for Mr. Nor. Kids, not so much.
Okay. So now, at this point, all the windows are down, so are there any questions on the board? Because I guess we don't have any questions. We are set to resume on the 8th of March at 5:00 PM, and then if needed, which probably will be the 9th of March at 5:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Not adjourned, we're just going to.
To recess, I'm sorry.
Some of.
Second?
Until, until, March 8th, 5 o'clock, this building.
Yes. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Recession.
Recession. Sorry, thank you. Recession. Terminology.